Be good now.
So you need to make a motion to add an item to the agenda, is that what you're wanting to do?
Yes, sir.
All right, sir, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to add under new business and move new business in front of unfinished business, time permitting, three topics. One, water and sewer, to have a discussion with Caroline County who's present. The next item USDA discussion, and the next item legal representation for the town.
Why would you want to move unfinished business, data ahead of unfinished business, when they were already on the agenda?
I would need a second to go to discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'll give you the second to go to discussion, for sure.
To answer that question, Mr. Mayor, I think the three topics, water and sewer, the state of the town's water and sewer, and the agreement with Caroline County, that discussion is probably going to be lengthy. There's a discussion revolving around USDA and loan requirements. I think that may also be lengthy. And then, the third one I proposed is legal representation for the town. We need to, I think, come to an agreement to move on that topic also. So that's my reasoning to move new-
Why is there a rush on this, and wasn't it added to the agenda the proper way?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I got the agenda to-
I mean, this is something that should have been brought up ahead of time, especially with a lengthy discussion that, from a meeting that supposedly transpired Monday between a couple council person, people. So why is there a rush on it?
You have a motion on the floor.
And we are discussing the motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I guess to answer that, I do think that our town's water and sewer is a pertinent topic to the livelihood of the citizens in this town, so.
What meeting on Monday? You mentioned a meeting on Monday.
I wasn't privy to it, wasn't on the invite list.
Yeah, I'm happy adding those things to the agenda. You know, my preference would be let's take care of the pedicab, because I don't think it's going to take very long. I think the others are going to take some time. It'd be nice, from my perspective, to go ahead and take care of pedicab and just get that done quickly.
I agree. I'm staying with you. We just had a 50-minute discussion on pedicab, so.
I know, that's why I feel like it ought to be quick. Okay. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to add those three things under new business, but keep the order in the same, same place.
Would you like to correct your motion to read that? I'll put it to you this way. I got a primary motion and a secondary motion to re, to alter the primary motion. I have no legal advice here to tell me otherwise what to do, so we'll just drop it?
Just go with the first motion, just call, call the question on that.
I mean, you know, don't make things complicated on us. We don't have the advice.
Understood, Mr. Mayor. I made a motion, there was a second, we got to discussion, there was a substitute motion made.
Okay, do I have a second on the substitute motion? All right, moving on with the first motion.
I'll make a second on substitute, but I have no clue whether that's allowed.
I don't either, that's why I say I don't have legal advice, legal counsel to tell me otherwise.
Just run the first motion, and if it passes, it passes.
But I just got a second on the, on the alternate one, that I don't know if it's legal or not. Take a recess.
Hello?
Andrea.
Yeah.
I got you on speaker here. We, we have a question, we have a situation. I have a motion that was first and second. We got into discussions. Then Dan made a substitute amendment motion or whatever, to that motion, to add something different, and I even got a second on it. Is that even legal?
Yes, you vote, so you're going to vote on Dan's thing first.
Okay.
And then you're going to go and vote on the original motion.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Bye.
All right. So we heard that we'll vote on Dan's. If it passes, then it carries to the first, and we'll vote on the first. If it doesn't, then the first stands as it is.
So just to recap what my motion is, is to do all the items that Arthur wants to do. I just want to keep pedicab in front, so we can get that out of the way, and then dive into the other items that I think are going to take a lot of time.
And we had the second in that we spent-
Well, I'll keep the discussion going, Mr. Mayor. We spent 50 minutes on pedicab in our work session. So to say that that's, was resolved, I don't think so. So I think it's going to be a lengthy discussion, and that's why I wanted to place the water and sewer concerns and the other things in front of that.
All right, anybody else for further discussion, other than that? We'll go for a roll call, vote on this. Sergeant Jean?
What do we vote?
Voting on to whether we accept Dan's motion, substitute motion, to keep new business where it's at, and unfinished business where it's at on the agenda.
Because Arthur made a motion, have a second.
Okay, no.
Vote on it, so therefore I'm voting no.
Jeff?
The same, no.
Dan?
Yes.
Valerie?
No.
Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
I'll say yes, only because we're going to get, get to both of them tonight anyway. It's going to be a long meeting.
Arthur? I'm a no.
All right, so we've got four noes. Motion doesn't carry. Now we're back to the first motion, that was made by Arthur. If we're done with discussion, we can go to a roll call. Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan? Valerie?
Yes.
David?
Yes, I'm just sorry we have to put the length of time-
Randy?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. So we move unfinished business below new finished business, and we'll end, add the county of Caroline in there. All right. Moving on now, we're going to public comments. Do we have anybody who would wish to speak at public comments? Please come on up, state your name and your address, and I'll give you three minutes.
Can you hit the button on the base of that thing? Thanks.
Evening. My name is Jean Young, and I live at 109 Mari Avenue. And I guess I'm the, the focus of the whole pedicab, as it's referred to. I retired on May 25th after 41 years in public education. I wasn't a history teacher, I was a science teacher, but I, I am fascinated by the history of our little town. I would like to share that history with others who are just moving into our town, and maybe some of you who would just like to have an afternoon and take a tour. So back in January, when I was dreaming of retirement, I came up with this idea of the pedicab. I had to order it from Denver, Colorado, wait for three months for it to be delivered, and I've been practicing and pedaling, taking some folks on test drives. But two months ago, I submitted a business license to the town of Bowling Green. And here we are tonight. Last month, while I was on vacation, you folks voted and said that you would try to come up with a temporary solution for me, so that I could go ahead and get pedaling. And so I'm just using my three minutes to ask you to please come up with a way, so that I can start pedaling my dream and showing off our little town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? See, all right, Bonnie, I was wondering what was slowing you down.
Good evening, Council, Bonnie Cannon, South Main Street. I just would like to say to you that I fully support this lady. The pedicab business, I'm very much historian, I think all y'all know that. I have done a lot of events and a lot of history things in my life in Bowling Green, Caroline County, Port Royal, this whole area. I fully support her, and I think it would be a huge asset to the town of Bowling Green. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Bonnie. Anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none, closed public comments. Members' comments, do we have anybody who would wish to?
No, I definitely do. I'll try to keep it brief. I got a couple of things. You know, I do want to, I want to talk about my activity and how I'm, I'm here a lot. I, I do, you know, several hours here a week, you know, doing various things. And, you know, I, I greatly take pride in, in doing that. You know, I was, I was here, you know, since, I don't know, 3:00, no, 2:30 today. You know, setting up this, the AV and everything. Yesterday, I was doing some data entry stuff because of us being so short-staffed, you know, on the computers. Day before that, I was getting Mr. Manster set up with some, some email situations on, on what, some of the tasks that he was given to do. And, yeah, I'm happy to, to come out here and, and do those activities. Last week, when, when I was here, I got word of when county was going to go tour the wastewater plant, and, you know, I got invited to go along with that, so I went over there and got that. That was a good experience, it's always good to see the plant. I encourage, if, if not every one of us has been to that plant, you, you really should, you know, set your feet on there and, and get a lay of that land. We're, we're going to hear more about that later, obviously, but, you know, you should, you should see it firsthand. Yeah, every facility we have here in town. And I'm going to continue to, to be out here doing things. There, there is a limit on what I can do. You know, there, there's certain things that an elected person can't participate in, but I'm going to do everything that I can, you know, while I'm here, because, you know, what I find is it's needed. You know, I, I sat in on a, they, they were discussing some preliminary plans for the Harvest Fest, and I'm going to be out there doing that. One of the things I'm even going to try to find to do is get a dunking booth, and I'll probably volunteer for that, too. Liability permitting. But I, I just want to be part of everything and help out, and there is really a great need for that. You know, occasionally there's like some resistance, and I just want to continue doing it. I'm going to be back in here tomorrow. There is a lot to do. I, I thank Mr. Manster for, for coming up and volunteering his time. I, I thank every one of you that, that devote some extra time and does some things, like when you were out, you know, with the sewer breaks and everything. Like, it's, it's maybe unfortunate that it's needed, but it, it is needed. It's greatly needed, and, you know, we're, we're here to, to represent, but also roll our sleeves up, too. You know, I, I wanted to like, take that positive note before getting a little bit more negative, but there, I, I was, tensions are a little high right now. You know, there, there's some, some heavy concerns coming up, and every, every one of us, you know, both staff and elected and appointed, you know, it, it seems that everybody's a little bit, bit wound up. I, I'm one of them. And, you know, that, that, that can, can bleed over into like an emotional, you know, issue. And, you know, we've, we've had raised voices in here before, we've had people walk out before. So, you know, if, if things were to, to get rough, you know, I, I just want to put on everybody's mind that, you know, complaining and blaming, that's not going to solve anything. We're, we're here to fix everything, so for every negative thing that we want to think up, let's think up something positive and be about how we're going to fix a problem, because that's what we ultimately have to do. Because we're just, we're so far understaffed, we're so far behind in everything that has broken down over time, whether it's a physical break, like our utilities, or a personnel break, like all of the resignations that we've had. We have holes to fill, literally. Our staffing, like, that's a point that had me a little bit depressed. We, we have been asked a few times to look at our organizational charts, and, and we haven't done that. Like, there was an email sent out that we should add that to an agenda, and, and we, by not committing to that, we, we chose not to. We have taken a little bit of time to review the potential town manager applications. Right now, this office does not have a single permanent employee in place. We, we have a temporary hire, we have a person functioning as an interim, and we have a town manager that resigned. Nobody's there permanently. Every, every one of those positions, plus the two empty ones, needs to be hired, and I'm greatly concerned about that. We had, this is my last point. We had our, our closed, closed session where we, we discussed some of the town manager hires, and we need to set our dates. We talked about Thursdays, and we're going to need to get on that. We, we already have talked about having the, whatever, third Thursday of the month being for work sessions, but we also talked about at our, at our last meeting, like, the next couple Thursdays, we would get together. So we, we need to see the process through. You know, we, we made some choices. We need to contact individuals, you know, make interviews. This also is going to go for the town attorney position, so we're going to need to utilize the fact that we talked about meeting on Thursdays, see it through, look at those town manager things, or take a look at our organizational chart and keep things going how they are. It's all on us, but we need to address it all. Town manager, town attorney, town staff, along with these other issues we're about to be hit with, we're going to have to see those things through. Now, in the procedural sense, because I know that there was some consternation about scheduling, all that we need to do is recess tonight's meeting until next week, or if we can't agree on that, the next week, and then that's fine. And then we add whatever items, and one of those things that I'm foreseeing adding to that next week's agenda is the pedicab, you know, after, because, you know, reviewing everything, but we'll get to that later. And that's how we handle it. Okay, I'm finally done, thanks.
Anybody else?
Um, I do, actually, and I'll keep it as positive as possible. Since Mr. Voight brought up the town manager applications, I recall almost two weeks ago, I sent an email to town council designating August 10 as a date to interview. I contacted prospective individuals, made an error in my time for July 27th, contacted the prospective individuals again, and told them we need to recognize our three-day posting. They understood. In the email, which only one council member, thank you, Mr. Hagman, responded to, I asked for a confirmation of August the 10th. I asked Mr. Voight to connect with the clerk to have that posted, because if it's not done by tomorrow, we cannot have that meeting. As of today, none of that has been done, and I know you and I talked about it yesterday. So in regards to town manager here, I have no idea what this town council wants to do, so I find, I will be positive in saying I will laugh a little bit at your comment, because no one had the courtesy to send a email response, no one had the courtesy to text or to call me on the phone. So, yes, want to be as positive as possible, but for me, if you have no understanding and respect, you have no trust. So that's all I have to say on a positive note.
I'm going to be real positive. Justin, Caroline County, everybody that showed up for National Night Out, it was a success. The people that donated, I think the county put money in for the hot dogs and did different things, or whoever they were, thank you very much. Justin and, and the fire department, Caroline, the town of Bowling Green, the chief, the sheriff's office, everybody was there. It was a great turnout, and if you didn't see it and didn't make it, I took multiple pictures, I posted them on everything in Facebook, so you can see what it was like. We had a face painter there, paint kid's face, which was one of the biggest hits of the whole night. That lady was probably working after 8 o'clock, still painting faces. But it was a good turnout, and thanks to all for, for involved in that.
I just wanted to say a couple things, and I'll keep it as brief as I can. One, in reference to the special meeting that was called on July 24th, I did state in our last town council meeting that I was unavailable for a prior meeting that was scheduled with Caroline County. And I apologize again for not making that meeting as I had a conflict. I didn't, it was a closed session, I don't have any follow-up on what was discussed during that. I just see myself and the mayor were unavailable for that meeting, so I'll leave it at that. I did have a meeting on Monday with myself and another council member in Caroline County, was invited to that, I did attend. I think we'll get into the discussion on it, but if anybody has any questions now, I'm open for it, but they're here. And just want to say thanks to staff who is operating, and Mr. Voight and every other council member who's assisted the town on operating daily. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, I'll just say something real brief. Starting either Monday or Tuesday, which is the 7/38th, we will start our sewer line repairs up on, just past the intersection of North Main, and it will come all the way down to the manhole by the shopping center where the first turn, turn spot is into the shopping center coming south, be coming down to there. We're looking at approximately three weeks, and at the latter part of it, the most of the, of the project, I'm going to say probably is going to be, northbound will be shut down altogether. And that's going to be from the intersection down to the first, just past the first turn into the shopping center. Is that not, okay. I think other than that, everything else is open. They'll have flagmen out there on the north end, they'll have cops, police present when they get into the intersections, there's detour signs posted all over, and lit signs as well. So just pay attention, you know, when you get around North Main and Broadus, East and West Broadus, please. Thank you. Okay, nobody else? We'll move on to staff reports, public works. Anybody, I just gave you an announcement about the sewer, about the sewer line. Anybody else have anything on it? All right, police department, anybody have any questions for the sheriff, I mean, the sheriff, the chief? I got so many county members here, I think I'm in a county meeting.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff. I've had a lot of family emergencies over the past couple of weeks, and all the support, prayers, everything everybody's been doing for myself and my family, I really appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Sure thing, chief. Keep positive note. All right, hearing none for the chief. Town treasurer, finance department, anybody have any questions? Or y'all have anything you need to say?
Tricia, how are you doing as far as keeping up with the bills? With you just being the old one, and are we, we getting them paid?
With keeping up with everything?
Yeah, yeah. As far as the billing, paying our bills.
It's happening, yeah, I have paid a whole lot. So, yeah, pretty, they're up to date as of today.
Okay.
Um, all of them are up to date, bills went out, people have been paid.
All right. Just checking.
All right, moving on to town administrative, town manager. You have anything you need to add?
The only thing to report, I think some things are on the agenda later, but the only thing to report is that I did have a, a call from, or a meeting with Aqua, and Aqua is interested in bidding on our water and sewer facility. So I'll be bringing more information back about that. Thank you.
You didn't tell them what the mayor told him. All right, moving on to consent agendas. Can we get a motion to wrap five down to eight into one consent agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor, I make a-
Make a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agendas with the prior feedback given to town staff regarding item number six. There is one edit that I had passed before the meeting. Over.
Okay, so you already gave it to them, then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good enough. I have a motion, do I have a second?
We could probably ask what that edit was.
Sure, it was just adding in a word on one of the topics for smart scale.
Okay.
About.
I can second it.
All right, you got a second, but Jeff? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to new business. Who do we have for new business?
Mr. Mayor, I can start the discussion, then I'll hand it over to the town manager and/or Caroline County who's present. There was a meeting that was called, it was Monday at 4:30 at the county admin building, myself and another council member, Mr. Stork, attended that meeting on July 31st, and that was to discuss the Caroline County Utility Operation Agreement with the town of Bowling Green. And we were given some documentation in regards to that, and that was a follow-up from a meeting that occurred with the town manager and Mr. Voight on July 27th. And there was various topics, and I'll just touch base on the topics, because I'm sure we'll get into discussion on it. Waste water treatment facility was discussed, wastewater treatment plant, some recommendations, water facilities and wells, our storage tanks, infrastructure, and sewer, and other notes were the highlights. And I'll turn it over to the town manager, that's fine, or Caroline County, however we'd like to proceed.
I don't have any comment.
All right, sir.
So let me ask, so to set the stage, and you described that adequately, but this was an agreement that council asked to start a MOU with the county to look into an agreement operating our plant temporarily emergency-wise, correct?
Um, well, I'll set the stage. The, in January, the town council requested that we pursue an MOU with, and look at a proposal from the, the county of Caroline. So I discussed that with the county administrator and his staff, and a resolution was presented to town council, which was approved to move forward with, with requesting from the board of supervisors that proposal. So they are in the process of providing a proposal. We answered some questions for them, and, and so the next step, I assume, is to go back to the board of supervisors and then finally provide the proposal to the town council for your review. In the meantime, the public works director resigned. That still provided adequate staff to operate the plant with wastewater manager and our chief operator, and then our public works manager who oversees the operations of the, of the lawn maintenance and all the other issues around town. So, who also works with the water side. After, a few weeks after that resolution was signed, and the, and most recently, the, the wastewater manager has resigned. I reached out to the county to ask if, knowing then that we would not be legally operational because we did not have the licenses that we needed to operate the water, the wastewater plant, I reached out to the county for an temporary emergency service. And the condition that they did agree, the condition was that they, they supervised the plant, which seemed very reasonable considering that it is their license, their employee's license, that would be used to oversee our plant. They asked to come talk to the staff and, and see the plant, and so that was the meeting that was referred to. Jeff Voight did attend with me, and it was last Thursday. And so the staff, all the staff were present, and, and so we did talk to them about what they would see following the, the, this going into effect, and the county assured them that they were there- Jeff Voight did attend with me, and it was last Thursday. And so, the staff, all the staff were present, and, and so we did talk to them about what they would see following the, the, this going into effect. And the county assured them that they were just there to help and that the operation would, all the employees would stay intact in the, at the facility. That gives time for the Town Council to review the proposal and to work back and forth with the county to, to make decisions on that future MOU. While, while we were in discussion, the county brought to my attention a couple of items. One was our drying bed. It is, it's problematic because the sand, it has, the sand is not, it's not proper sand. And so that was one issue, as well as what they call, it's not a SCADA system, but it is the system that notifies us when our employees are not present. It notifies us that there is a problem at the plant. So, I then directed the, the staff to go ahead and change the sand. That is going to cost many thousands of dollars, but it will then allow us to have proper drying bed. The second thing is I directed them to fix the machine that, that notifies the, us of, of a problem. So that was, that was done. And then, and that's where I am with it. And so, I'll just let somebody else take it from there, but I, I'll let the county take it from there, but that's, that's what I know about the situation. We are, it, it, oh, oh, one other issue. There was, it was brought to my attention earlier by Sean, our employee, that there was an issue with gross alpha in one test, in one of our wells. So, a second test has to be done because we don't know if that's accurate. So, he worked with William from the county, and he did the test. There was an issue with, with getting it down to the proper labs. And so he did call VDH and ask them if it was done properly, and VDH said yes, it is fine, and if there is a problem with it, we will do another test. So we are waiting for the results of that. So that, that is, that has been done as far as my understanding, has been done properly. I did follow up with the Director of Public Works, Joey Shebel, and he said that he did speak with William, his staff, and this was last Friday, and he did say that, that that is correct, that everything is okay with that, not, not okay with the gross alpha, but we're just waiting on that. But the testing was done properly, and VDH has, has agreed to that. So, that is, that is where it stands. I think I have resolved any of the top issues, or we are on our way to, to resolving those, those top issues that are of the most importance. So that's what I have to add. I am unaware of anything further from that. Thank you.
I didn't understand the emergency MOU. Where did that come in at? Because the only MOU we did was just the one asking them to run our plant. So what was the emergency MOU?
It's just, it was an emergency agreement, emergency or temporary agreement, that the county would step in. It's not a formal MOU, that the county would step in and we would pay them on a monthly basis for their time. And they, we already have an MOU in place for some services.
Right.
So we can use that temporarily, was our thought, and we would proceed with that until, to just give everyone time to review the permanent, permanent MOU, or proposal for the permanent-
So the meeting you had July 27th?
Yes.
Was for the temporary assistance they're providing, Mr. Stanley?
Correct.
I'm sure I got it. Has nothing to do with the MOU that we have precipitated before that?
Right.
Just want to make sure that-
That is correct.
So there are two separate things-
There are two separate issues.
Exactly.
One, I had to resolve being compliant with DEQ-
Correct.
And I needed somebody who was licensed.
Exactly.
So the county graciously stepped in to help us.
Great, thank you.
Would like to add to that, the report that was given to myself and Mr. Stork stated various topics. Some, I would say, would be as noted DEQ requirements for outside of the facility, some within the wastewater treatment plant. There were 12 topics, the wells, and there were some various things there where there was, I guess we'll turn it over to Mr. Cully and discuss, I guess, some of those, or however you'd like to proceed, Mr. Mayor.
Is this for, for the emergency takeover, or is it for the original-
This is for the emergency-
For them just to come in?
Agreement discussion that happened on the 27th.
Because I'd been asking Allison for a letter authorizing the county to come in and help out through the town, you know, through the emergency service through the town, and so that's why I'm now hearing this. But, no, that's fine. I mean, we need something. But I guess I wasn't in the loop on the proper way of getting it done. All right, go ahead, Mr. Cully.
I'm here from the government to help. It's an all right.
But that's all we want, just be on board.
We from the county, I will say, we from the county would like a letter from the town asking us to, so my staff has said, what do you want me to do? I said, continue to help until we get a, a letter, but you don't have a licensed operator. I have multiple. So, it, it's not just Mr. Stanley. He's, he's just the most familiar with your system, obviously, because he came from your system, but we will have other of our licensed operators overseeing your plant operation. One of the things that I, I spoke to both Mr. Shebel and Ms. Fincham was, I'm not gonna send my licensed operators into a facility unless I know they have control, because, number one, I wouldn't do that to them as a person, where they would endanger their own license, but it's selfish on my part. They work for me, I need them working for Caroline County. I can't have them lose their license from the county's perspective. So that was the emphasis for the meeting, and that we needed control of the employees. They're your employees, but they've got to answer to my staff when they say, I need this done, I can't have, well, I'm not doing that. If it's something that needs to be done to protect the plant, then it needs to be done, and you have to have the trust that we're gonna run your plant like we run Caroline facilities, to stay in compliance with all of the applicable rules and regulations and things for your permit. So that's why we came down and did an inspection, and Mr. Stanley has found a number of things that are compliance issues with your permit if inspector were to happen to show up. Now, we're not planning on calling one, but, you know, we don't know when they're coming. So we've got to make sure that we get your plant to where it is in compliance, and some of the things will probably be easier than others. And I am not remotely an expert on this, it's only a 30,000-foot view that I could give you. Mr. Stanley was asked by me to, after that meeting, please put a bullet point, which he went into more detail, but a bullet point of the things you see there that, that need to be taken care of. And some of those are critical, and some of those, hey, if this was ours, we'd be fixing it. And I realize money's an issue, and, you know, in a perfect world, everybody have everything perfect, but there are things that are gonna cost you down the road, they cost you in operation, they cost you in what your affluent is able to produce, the cleanliness of what you're putting out. And then when you get on the water side, then you have some of those same issues. Operational things can cause you quality of order issues. So I think that's what has been put together, and we're here to talk about tonight, but I'd hate to not leave without the blessing of the council. We want the county to step in and help us in an emergency situation. If, at, at the end of the day, you don't want our help in a permanent MOU, so be it. We're not here to take anything away from you. We have sewer capacity, we have way more water capacity than you do, not even without the river. We just have the ability. Number one, most of my wells for the county are in bedrock, and we're not subject to groundwater management issues. You know, we have, well, it's 800 gallons, you know, a minute. So we have huge wells, and we have a lot of demand for water, but we, we have more water. So I'm not, I've had this speech before, one time, Lake Caroline, thought we've come in and wanted their water out of the lake. No, it's not enough water to even run a water plant in there. So, we're not coming to take any resource. We really are here offering our expertise. There was a time when you were the bigger utility and we were the small one, but that role has flipped over the years. We're the bigger utility. Everybody who lives in this town is a citizen of Caroline County. And every jurisdiction I've worked in that's had a town like that, it's the same way. The town's not an enemy to people that live here paying taxes for my salary and the services they get out of the county. And so, we want to help you, we are coming here offering that. You may hear some things from Willie that are not good, we're not here to lay blame. And a lot of the things have probably developed over a long period of time, and a lot of them do probably relate to, well, let's keep a Band-Aid on things. But those type of things, over time, it'll do it in your own home, can come back to where then, if you could have fixed it a long time ago, it might have been cheaper, but now you're kind of stuck with it, and you're gonna have to work your way through, through those things and those expenses. And right now, with very limited staff, and that's what's happening to you, people are peeling off, it's like, ah, and have, have left you to a point where you can't legally, you can legally operate water, but you can't legally operate your sewer plant without a licensed operator. Class two? I do remember things from one day to another. But anyway, I don't want to drone on. Mr. Stanley can answer a lot of questions, he's got a handout that he can give to all the council members, it's kind of a little bit updated from the one you've gotten, he's got pictures. So, with, unless you have some questions for, for me as management, we've only been trying to help. And only two of you can meet at any given time, too, so remember that when meetings are set up, and who gets, who picks what wasn't picked, you know, by, by staff.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, yes.
I have a question for William. What about this sand situation? When you worked for the town, did we have sand down there?
Yes, ma'am. It was a class A sand, it is supposed to be actually what you have in the sand bed. And it basically is more flaky than what you have. Right now, the sand that was installed during one of the prior regimes, as far as the last two, I think, directors, they used the wrong sand, and I believe they used a more compact sand, and it's almost like beach sand, so when it gets wet, it's more compact and not draining, and you, instead of-
So in other words, they didn't know what they were doing?
Instead of absorption, right now, you're waiting on evaporation to basically, to dry your beds. So, the, the great thing about that is, is you can dig that out, probably about eight inches, and if you take eight inches of sand out, at that point, you can put in class A sand and redo everything as far as-
And cost about how much?
The digging it out part and the removal is gonna be the worst part. The digging it out, you can basically remove the sand, install it into the roll-off, that you do the same as far as removing sludge. You would have to pay the weight on that, just like you would sludge, and then you would also have to pay for the hauling in of new sand to be installed in the beds, which the town does have a skid steer, which they could actually install the-
That's surprising.
-sand themselves, but they, as far as digging it out, you do not currently have anything within the town's equipment that you can dig it out with, unless you do it by hand.
Thank you.
Right. So, well, I was a little younger the last time I was at this podium, but, but basically, we were asked on the 27th to come down to meet with staff and take a look at the wastewater plant and run through some things that possibly could be issues, issues for the town, issues with DEQ or VDH. And also, we interviewed the staff and talked to them a little bit about some things and things that they had going on, and, and things that they had been told by prior inspectors that still was kind of on the cuff to be done. And starting out, let's see, and starting out, we went to-
That whole thing is just pictures, right?
Yes, this right here is a lot of pictures, yes. Only about four or five-
Make sure it wasn't a lot of wordage.
Only about four or five pages of it is actually documentation. But the, walking around the lavatory, like, it was brought up about the auto dollar. The auto dollar is a, an emergency lifeline to you after hours. It, it basically calls you if your generator is running, if you have a wet well overflow or low wet well that could possibly burn your pumps up. There's a, a lot of things, low UV intensity, or U-tensity, as they call it. A lot of things there that it will alarm you of after hours when the operators are gone home for the day. And a lot of that is based on your O and M manual, that basically, where your, your hours of your operation day are set forth, and then after those hours of operation, that auto dollar is your lifeline. So, they had been spoken to about that. The O and M manual was looking at that, that, looks like that may need to be updated as well. It still has the original hours of operation, which was 16 hours, which, when I started out there. And of course, you guys have reduced that to 10 now, so that, that would be something to look at. The required documentation, DEQ, your logbooks, we used to keep logbooks daily, and one of the first things they asked for when they come in is a, is a logbook and to review. Right now, y'all, you currently do not have logbooks. They haven't been using logbooks for quite a while now, and everything is recorded on a daily sheet. It's, the sheet really doesn't have a lot of information on it, mostly just the daily samples, and maybe some UV light checks as far as like the U-tensity there, and that's about it.
So, I'm sorry, William, can I stop?
Yes.
So the auto dialer, which is scary, it was unplugged and hadn't been on since 2017?
Correct.
Is it plugged in, is it working now?
I plugged it in to see if it worked, and it, it took off just like it normally did. It probably just needs to be programmed, but the telephone line that was dedicated for it has been cut off, and it's not operable at this time. So we've asked for temporary to just run it around to a phone line that actually is live, and then the town can decide if they want to dedicate another line just for the auto dollar later on, or-
Okay, thank you.
You know, and go from there.
About that, I'm sorry?
Yep, go ahead.
Does that auto dialer tell you if you've got bad sensors, it's some location, or do we know whether the, what the rest of it is even wired in, working?
Like I said, it originally had been set up for, it's, I believe it's like six or eight different alarms, if I can remember by memory. The alarms itself were, like I said, UV low intensity, which is, basically means you're not disinfecting your water going out, which is of course a no-no. And then, of course, your high wet well, low wet well, generator power fail, you know, as far as that, that was most of it. Basically, just to protect your pumps, to protect things. I think the scum pump in the filtrate pump station also was on it, because those both are mini pump stations. And if something happens where those things are continuously running, then you're burning up pumps, and that gets expensive. The DMR access, where we are operating under emergency situation, we will be signing off on the DMR. To do so, we need access to the DEQ site. I've asked several employees, who's the manager of the DEQ site? I've gotten three answers. And the last answer that I got was that it was the Town Manager. I'm not for sure who's actually the responsible person in charge as far as for the DMR, but that's the person that would give us access to the DMR, where we could actually enter the town's numbers, and that has to be done by the 10th of the month, every, every month. On an outside walk around, just- On an outside walk around, just some quick notes, of course-
William, I have one question.
Yes.
You say it has to be done by the 10th of the month? Does that mean it has not, that has not been happening?
It has been happening, but your former employee has still been doing your DMR for you through the other employees that are still on staff. Currently. So that's-
Can you repeat what you just said?
Your, your former employee-
Not Brock.
Not Brock, but your-
Is in communication with our present staff.
And completed the last DMR for you. And basically went through the current employees to do so.
Sorry, I guess one quote.
I think I'm, there are some things here that are going to be said that I'm going to not participate in. These are legal issues that we need an attorney to address. And I find a lot of concern just with that comment. So I'm going to listen to the rest of this.
Basically, what happens with that is, is the, of course, you have daily information that is provided in a 30-day form. And they provided that information to him so he could fill out the information on the DEQ website because he was the only one with access. And he filled the DMR out for them for the last month. And now that we've been asked to come in, we kind of need that access as well. And of course, I don't know exactly who all is still on that. But it would behoove the town to request to remove past employees on that.
That's important. Who gives you access to it? How do we do that?
Whoever the responsible person in charge is for the town. I, we don't, like I said, we've asked three times who has signed up. The next call I can make if the town is okay with it, I can call DEQ and call Rebecca Weiss, and she will probably let me know and give me access. And then we can, we can turn it over.
It's, I guess-
But that's-
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's as simple as calling down there and removing employees who no longer work here and adding in the correct POCs with access to that system, correct?
Yes. And she may be able to tell me who the responsible person is. If it is a former employee, then we may have to jump through a few more hoops to get everything square. If it's somebody that's still on staff, we'll just get access and go through and make it happen and change it.
Thank you.
On just an outside walk around and things that I knew or paid attention to when, when I was there. Of course, like we were talking about your dump truck and your backhoe is gone. So you really don't have any access to remove the sand from the sand beds, like we were talking. A lot of your outside stock that we had that was in, basically on the loft outside of the old plant, you had, I'd venture to say $50,000 worth of manhole lids and rings and valve risers and valve boxes and spare pipe and all that. All that is gone. It's nowhere to be found. When I asked staff where it went, they said jumped.
So we reference, when, when did you leave here? What is your, what is your reference point to when it was here?
I left full-time in 2013 and worked part-time until August of 2017, and it was still here.
August of 2017-
Yes.
Is hardwood?
Yes.
Okay.
So that equipment, I guess, stockpile of equipment-
Yes.
Obviously, the backhoe, which is probably a necessity, and a dump truck have all-
The smaller dump truck, yeah. You still have the, the last things I think I, that I purchased when I was here was the, the John Deere tractor and the, the larger dump truck, the International. And that's still here.
So does someone, I guess, who has experience on when those items left from 2017 until present time? Because it hasn't been since I've been here. But the dump truck and the backhoe, I guess, did they-
Yeah, they were sold on .gov back when Reese was here, is when they sold both of those items.
That was prior to the previous, to the public works director that just left.
Right, yes.
It was prior to him.
Prior to the-
Prior administration made those. I got, understood.
So we sold those because they were old and worn out, or?
They, they sold them because they said, we don't need them. We're putting maintenance on them. We don't use them. We don't tear our roads up anymore and fix our own pipes and this and that. So it was just another way to get some revenue on general funds and get rid of items that we don't need. That's, so, you know, that was their, their call. But yeah, that was why. Probably same, probably same name as the manholes and stuff.
About what time was that? Just a year?
Reese, I don't know when last he was here. When was he here? When?
He departed before, what, 2020? Somewhere around 2020, 2021? 2020?
Yeah. And it was probably maybe his first or second year. I think it was his first year, first year in, and I was on council. But yeah, they, they went through and spent a lot of money fixing up and sold some stuff.
That's pretty much what I had on the inside there. As far as the laboratory and what we were looking at there, walking around the wastewater plant, the influence side, you look pretty good there. The headworks and everything looked good. The, the auger that was installed in 2017, right before I'd left, that seems to be in working order and everything looks good. The oxidation ditch, was walking around, when we walked around that day, noticed that both of the gearbox for the roller block bearings are leaking oil heavily. And there's a pit that's basically under each one of those that it allows for drainage, of course, and rainwater gets mixed in as well, of course. There's a lot of oil in there. And the guys had recommend, they had said that they had been pumping it down. We recommended them to pump it down again because it was so close to the next rain event, it would have ran into your ditch and caused issues for you. Definitely don't want petroleum in your wastewater plant. We had recommended to them to look into someone to maybe get some prices about rebuilding or replacing, depending on what the cost was on each one of those. And the gearbox on one of them, they've actually got a strap hooked across the box pulling over towards the motor because the chain is hitting the actual chain box. And you can hear it banging around, which in a matter of time, probably you're going to have an issue there. And you're bigger than what you have now. So your clarifiers and walking around, took a look at those. The gentleman that we were speaking to said that they didn't really, really know the last time they were drained and checked as far as the bleeds or anything on the inside. We noticed we could see the sludge blanket in the clarifiers. And I asked them, you know, where were we at with mixed liquors? And they said, right now, currently 5,500. Our staff did one today. It's currently 6,100. The normal range, you're probably looking somewhere around 3,000, 3,500. That's your, that's your mixed liquor. That's the solids in the plant. So basically, to keep your bugs healthy inside, to make sure that you're, you're treating the way you're supposed to, you know, 3,000 to 4,000 would probably be your max. You would want to go there. They were, like I said, they, they had told us around 5,500. They actually pulled a sample today, checked it. It was 6,100. On one side, I think 58 on the other. But they told us it was higher than that before you guys had a contractor, I guess, had come in. And they had pulled some seed there. And they said it was probably running around 7,000 at that time. But again, if they're, if the drying beds were having problems drying and they were having problems wasting, that's probably more than likely where that came from.
You're thinking once the drying beds are completed and that should take care of the issue?
Yes. From what we got from staff, staff was telling us that the normal time is in the summertime, you can usually pour sludge on a drying bed and the cake is dry in a week, maybe two at the most. They're waiting three to four weeks to a month on a drying bed, is what I was, we were told. And when I asked why, they said it was the wrong sand in the beds. And we took a look at it. And it is the compactful sand versus the regular sand. And one of the employees did state to us that he actually mentioned to the prior director that that was the wrong sand. And they told him he was in charge. So just leave it alone. Sludge pumps and the air compressor looked fine. Wet wells, you were just missing a telescopic valve. It looked like that they maybe had moved that over from the future clarifier spots and had needed it on the other side. We just recommended, you know, go ahead and order a year of replacement. Scum pump and station, decent looking, just had control boxes, is a little weathered and dated. Sand filters, we just recommended that they rotated those. A couple of them were kind of rough looking. Algae grows in them, of course. You let them sit in the summertime for just a week. And, you know, you've got algae and things in them. So we're, just asked them to rotate those. Don't think there'll be an issue there. The UV area, I've been told several things, and I've kind of looked into this more even after we had the meeting the other evening. We walked around and looked in the UV box, the main control for the UV box, it does not work. And that control tells you the hours, it tells you the intensity, it basically gives the information to everyone to jot down daily to where DEQ comes in, they can tell how long this has been running. And to make sure that you're getting the disinfection that you're supposed to get, just like we do in a water system where we check a chlorine residual, you're checking that intensity daily to make sure that you're getting that level of treatment. Well, they've wired two PD 6000s up on each one of the, which is just an LCD control panel that you can look at and it'll tell you what the intensity is. But you have no way to read the hours. DEQ told them, from what I get from staff on the last visit, that this was okay for now, but that box was going to have to be replaced to where you can actually read hours. Then I was told that there was allotted money to replace the UV lights and that that was supposed to have been done. I see some, like, some nice wires, looking wires out there. And I seen the two boxes. And when we were talking in the meeting, Mr. Houli and Mr. Stork and Mr. Cully and Mr. Sealy, we were discussing whether or not they, they had actually been done. And I said, well, the wires did look kind of new. I said, but let me ask. And when I asked, they said, no, that it has not been updated at this time. So that brings me to the other question we had was, when we were looking at the intensity, we, the first day we walked around, the intensity looked good. It was over like six, as far as on the reading. When I walked around the second time to do pictures and also our operator, the two times he's walked around the plant in the last couple of days, he told me that the intensity has been like 0.2 and around 2.5 or lower, which means that normally you either need to clean the bulbs, replace the bulbs, or find out why the intensity level meter is reading that low. And that's kind of below the level you want to, you definitely want to be higher than that.
So wasn't there a motion made when?
There was. It was between 70 to 80,000. And that came to council in 2022. And we asked staff to return us more than one quote or proposal for that. There was a return to council with two. We voted on that as a council this year, probably unanimously. And I guess we'd have to check the records to confirm if the payment had been made to that vendor. But it was, I'm going to say, it was between 70 and 80,000. And when I was in the discussion with them, it perplexed me that we would replace the lights and not replace the main brain or control box to that. So I would hope, one, that that hasn't been paid yet out to a vendor. And then, two, I think we need to tailor that to make sure that this readout is available and going to be replaced with the lights.
So is any of that UV equipment down there look to you to be new, like in the last three months?
The only thing that I see new is, you know, the PD 6000 controls. And basically, it's, you've got an HOE switch with an LCD viewer screen. And that's all you have. It looked new to me.
So did, did we, did we buy that piece of equipment?
I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Yeah, I was thinking we'd probably have to research it.
I can't remember.
And speaking with staff, they told me no. But they said that they had submitted the three bids and someone had been awarded to who would do the work, but they just hadn't completed the work, is what I, was what I was told.
It was going to be a Trojan, a Trojan design back in, because that's what was there.
Right, right. It's supposed, it's a Trojan 3000 system. Been pretty much Trojan since it was put in in 92. Digestors, you're, they just had a blower replaced, the guys had told us about. And they also had a draining problem. We had talked to them about the draining problem, gave them some pointers. And I believe even they, what they were working with, they either got it loose or either had an air compressor hooked up to it and was able to blow it out to take care of that end. But the blower that was installed, I had a little concern with it when I was talking to one of the employees. It's got a heavy vibration to it. You can hear, I mean, you've got heavy metal sitting on concrete in the bottom. And you can hear that thing vibrating on the bottom enough, when, when you're standing on top of it, it rattles your teeth. That's not normal, or not what I'm used to as far as on that end. So I'm just concerned that you may have an issue down the road. And again, that's not a cheap piece of equipment either. The non-potable water pumps that you used to have, well, I should say that one time were located at the end of the plant. Those were used for basically to save on town water. You could use your effluent water to wash all your clarifiers, your oxidation dishes and things down. I guess over time, those pumps had kind of, I guess, went bad on the guys. And instead of replacing them, they just pulled them. So there is a, there's a valve inside the building that you can turn where you're either on non-potable or you're on town water. They did turn the valve. They are using town water to wash everything down and to clean everything. The only bad part about that is, is there's a backflow preventer that's inside that's needs to be checked yearly. And we asked about having that taken care of because the last check on it was 2021. So, like I said, we've touched bases on-
Would you recommend those pumps being replaced?
Yes. I mean, if it was me and the water that you really want to use to wash things down and versus using the water in town and knowing, you know, what the water situation is, I mean, I would rather use reclaimed water than the town's water. I mean-
I think the second concern would be the backflow preventer to be checked.
Yes.
Absolutely. That's a safety issue, no question.
They apparently have contacted, I was notified today that they have contacted someone to come do the backflow check. So that's supposedly being taken care of. Drying beds, like I said, we've touched on- Drying beds, like I said, we've touched on the Class A sand, just replacing that, digging the other, the five beds down about eight inches. Once you get down about eight inches, you get into like the pea gravel and then it gets to larger gravel before it gets to the drain. It sends everything back to the plant. That, if that's dug out and basically replaced with the Class A, you shouldn't have any problems after that. Going back to the solids issue and the town's always had a little bit of an eye on eye issue, which is just infiltration during rain events. And a lot of it's got to do with the age, you know, of the system. You know, a lot of the sewer lines were put in in 48, a lot of the laterals are terracotta or, you know, concrete or whatever, you know, as far as on that end. And a lot of rainwater does get in during those events. We've seen it as high, when I was here, your plants, you know, takes in an average of 90 to 100,000 a day. Plants, 250,000 a day plant, but that's not 250 in an hour. So, but we've seen it as high as 650,000, you know, during a rain event, which is a lot. And basically if the beds are an issue where they're not draining, where it gives the operators a little room to get rid of some excess water and you're having problems with your solids being a little higher, if you're already organically kind of strapped, if you get hydraulically strapped on top of it, then you're talking overflows and issues that you don't want to get into. So the, the chemical feed pump in the addition, there was a room when you first walk into the laboratory. The left-hand side is the office, the right-hand side is the chemical feed room. All the chemical feed pumps, the lines, the plumbing, everything has been removed. There's a washer and dryer and an ice machine in there now. If you ever wanted to add future chemicals, like if you're going to add any type of polymers or any type of alum or anything, you know, later on, it would have to all be added and started from scratch as far as the plumbing and pumps.
Why would that have been removed?
I have no clue. I mean, I, I wouldn't have, I would have never took it out. I mean, especially the plumbing part, I mean, the pumps, you know, some things may have sat there over time and gotten a little aged, but as far as the plumbing and everything that you had there, I would have, because everything that led in that room, it was six or seven different lines that I remembered that came out from each pump, come out, come down, run down the wall. Everything was underground and it ran to your influent, your wet well, to your digester. Anything that you needed assistance where if you needed to add a chemical to help you out, a polymer, folicillin, or, you know, an alum to help you out with sludge or whatever, anything that you needed to add at that point would, would have went through that room. Was it a nuisance? Yes, I mean, your office is right here and next door. You clunk, 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 you know, with the, the pumps, but all that's been removed. And I, I don't, I don't have an answer why.
So how do they add chemical if they need it? We don't?
You have no access right now.
All right.
All right. Moving on to the water. Wells look great, the wells inside, as far as the paint jobs, the, the bats, everything, clean as a whistle, looked great, everything looks great inside. The only issue that I have is, is well one, when I was here, ran 90 to 100 gallons per minute. Well four used to run about 80 to 90 gallons per minute. It's been running, from what we see, about 20 gallons per minute right now. I've asked how long that's been going on, I've been told for years. Well four is located over by the old Pizza Hut. All right, now, when I've asked, how come that well's never been pulled or anything's ever been done with it? I was told because in 2028, when the permits renewed, that's part of the geophysical data where basically you guys are going to have to do away with that well and drill another well. But to get through to 2028, we recommended to them at least taking a look at it because there's only a couple of things that could, could stop a well from producing to what it was once doing. One, it would either be the pump, but if it's been like that for a couple of years now, that pump should have burned up by now. Two, there's a hole in the line inside the pipe and it's just basically sitting there pumping. It's, you know what, off trying to pump, but it's recirculating and basically running back down into well. Or someone's been over there and worked on the electrical and wired it up backwards. That's the only three ways, I mean, that you could lose that type of production. And when we ask anyone, whatever, you know, where we're at with that and why it hadn't been looked at, it's, well, it's going away anyway. So I would definitely look into that and just see what was the problem, what was the issue? I mean, if it is a well issue or something there, I mean, at that point, you know what you have to deal with. But, I mean, if it's something as simple as the piping or the pump or, you know, wiring, I mean, let's get it fixed and let's get back to 80 gallons per minute. Well five, running around 220 gallons per minute, one of your, of course, your large producer. Everything seemed operable there, but we were notified, I was notified on the 15th by Sean Fortune that you guys had received a sample of gross alpha in the range of above 40. Your, of course, your limit is 15. This has happened before to that well. And when it has, it's basically by reducing the actual capacity or flow, you've been able to take some tests and, and get it back in within range at, at times. But looking at what you currently have, in the past, we cut the well off and basically you had time to try to figure out where you wanted to go with this and try to figure out, you know, how, how are you going to move forward? Right now with well four running, you know, 20 gallons per minute and the other, you know, running, you know, 80, 90, you really don't have the capacity to cut well five off and have that leisurely time to, you know, try to figure out, you know, hey, can we do something else or do something different here? We recommended a split sample be taken and this was discussed earlier. A split sample basically is just to prove that the laboratory did its job. So basically if you take the sample the same day, same time, take it to two different laboratories, when that result comes back, if both of them come back close to the same, then you know you've got a problem. If one comes back low, one comes back high, then you've got a lab problem. So basically that's what we recommended. On that Friday, Sean ran into trouble with finding two labs that would do the split sample. So they took one on Friday and took one on Monday. They, we asked them to contact the town manager, to also contact the health department to let them know that they had a high reading. And, and then we would await the results to see where you had to go from there. As far as, you know, there's several things you can look at down the road, but all of them get into money if, if, if it does come back where it's high and they start saying, okay, you have to start doing something. I mean, you could be looking at doing some homework on the well to find out which aquifer is actually the problem, screening it off. You could look at drilling another well beside it with it screened off where you don't have to get into the cost later on of operations of, of a treatment facility. But then ultimately you could also put in a treatment system, which would be most likely a reverse osmosis rack and another building there beside it. And then you would be looking at discharge water too. So you would also be looking at a pump station or some way to drain from there to the wastewater plant.
So William, the, the split sample that was not done exactly correct, it's been, both of them been set off, how long does it take to get the results back?
Four to six weeks on a rad sample. They wanted the hardest test to get back in a timely manner.
So is DEQ going to believe if waiting four to six weeks to get the answer and it wasn't done correctly time and wise, are they going to believe us if it's?
Well, the thing of it is, is, is right now, by the split sample being done on two different days versus being done the one day, you lose a little bit less of your argument of, is it the lab? Because it's two different days. Sean says he's talked to the health department and the inspector says that he would treat it the same. But he's got a person over top of him that may not agree with that as well. So once that.
If, I'm sorry, if that, if it does come back high and they, they agree that it's samples cool, but it's high. So we basically got four to six weeks to find that out. So during this four to six weeks, we need to do something well over here at Pizza Hut, right? We gotta, we gotta get that baby pumping more or we're going to be out of luck.
Well, here's, here's.
Let me just take five offline.
Here's the other issue though. While, while this was going on with five and the day that we had the meeting on the 27th, I was notified by Sean that well four also had a high sample comeback of gross alpha. Possibly, possibly what you got going through the meter, but you don't know if it's pumping itself to death, whatever, trying to make up for a hole that's in the line there or what you have exactly. And you won't know until you, until you pull it.
Well, how expensive is it to pull it and check?
Just to pull it and check, I mean, you're probably looking at $5,000. And then basically if, if, if you have to put the piping and everything back in or whatever as far as that and putting the pump back, I mean, you're probably, the full cost, probably somewhere around eight to 10.
And just for clarification, this is the well that was slated to be taken offline, well four?
Yes.
And it needs to be redug, correct?
Yes. And this is, this is what I've been told by staff. Now, I have not seen the DEQ permits for the wells. Basically, we've asked for those to where we can take a look and see what all is involved with those and what, what's down the line. Because, you know, if you guys in the future are looking, you know, to renew your permit, you're going to have to have all that done beforehand. I mean, we're, we're working on ours now and it's, it's taking forever just to get from DEQ exactly what, what, you know, we're supposed to do and what we want.
So if we've moved to renew a permit and these problems exist, that's going to stop the permit renewal process? Thank you.
It's definitely going to run a.
No, I thought unless they changed, I thought it was 20, year 25 that we had to get, take that well off.
See, there's certain things that it's kind of stair stepped. And like I said, we've been told, I think 28 is your renewal date. But it may be something in there that says that you have to have it cambered and the pump reset or on different wells by 25, 26, right on down the line. Without seeing them, I can't tell you what that schedule is.
Yeah, that was, yeah, the last, because Reese was here when all that was done. And, you know, we had one well, we had, or four. Four we had to raise up because it was in the bottom aquifer. They want to get it up right over the, no, five, five's in the bottom aquifer. So we got to raise it, we got to take it out and drill another one. The other one we had to raise up, we're supposed to raise it up. And I think they already raised it up, I'm not sure, but they were supposed to raise one of them up.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure where they are with all that.
I thought it was by the end of 25, we had to have them done. I guess we'll have to find out for sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they are with all that. We would have to, like I said, we would have to see the permits and look at them and try to decipher, you know, what would, you know, to try to help you out, you know, as far as on that end to see what all was required and what kind of timeframes, you know, you were, you were having to meet.
I know they were looking at the site and they made several, they, DEQ come down, you know, checking out the sites, checking level of the site for the buildings. You got to go with it because everything's got to be moved over. And they came back and said supposedly that everything was right. I think it was an easement problem and I think they found out it was okay. So all that should be in the works, I'm hoping.
I mean, it's the same, I mean, same thing with like the gross alpha issue. I mean, we've told the story before, we've seen AP Hill dug a well and moved 10 feet to the left and dug another one. And the first one was hot, the second one, no problem, you know, they just, you know, just depends on, you know, I guess which aquifer and everything you're in at that point. And as far as some of that, you may be able to coordinate some of the stuff that you have to do in your permit at the same time of doing some of the things that saw some of your gross alpha issues. Water tanks, everything looked good there. I mean, you guys have a maintenance program with southern corrosion. I think all that's, looks great, I didn't see any issues there. Of course, I made a comment about the infrastructure for the water and the sewer. You know, you know, we did maps years ago when I was here showing the, the problem areas, you know, red line, yellow line, green line. And, and, you know, the way I used to put it forth is, you know, green, you're good to go and yellow, you should be replacing, and red, you should have replaced yesterday. But there's some areas in there that, you know, definitely a concern and probably some of the, you know, between the leaks and things that have gone on and some of the problems that you've had, you know, it's also created some sewer issues, you know, as far as on that end too. So they're just something to keep in mind. Pump stations. You've got six pump stations, Heritage Pines, Oak Ridge, Lacy Lane, Route 301, Bowling Green Meadows and Maury Heights. All seem to be in mostly decent working order. Updates could be made, a couple in the future and some painting wouldn't hurt on some of the suction lift in Bowling Green Meadows. But Maury Heights, I don't know if you're aware, is currently under an emergency pump around. And there's two pumps in there that are bad. They're trying to make one out of two to get that back in the hole now. They're looking at 12 weeks for a replacement pump because, you know, supplies are rough to find, especially pumps. And that brought up the question of, do you have any spare pumps at all for any of your stations? No. So you are at the leisure of whatever your supply chain is as far as if you have sewer pumps go down. And looking at emergency pump arounds, and I believe Sean told me, I think it's $2,200 a month, I think y'all are spending right now on, on your pump, the, the emergency pump.
What do you mean, renting it?
Yes.
How long have we been renting it?
I'm aware of a month so far.
$2,200 a month to rent the pump? And when is the, when are the replacements coming?
12 weeks.
We did that so that there was not an emergency situation happening.
Correct.
We did that to make sure that we were covered.
You don't have much of a choice if you're waiting on the pumps as far as that. If you don't have the spares.
We can't go down there with buckets, I'm just surprised that there's $2,200 a month.
You don't have much of a choice and you definitely don't want to pump the haul costs. I mean, but the, those are down. And I was also notified that one of the pumps in the 301 lift station is down. It, it is burnt up. And that they went by one day and seen it steaming and that by the time they popped the lid and checked it, it was, it was sad, something stopped up in it and it's done. Lacy Lane.
So William, are you, I mean, you're recommending that we keep a pump, you know, for each station?
I, we try to keep one for everyone to have a spare. It's nice if you have universal ones where you can kind of keep, you know, uh, one and you. It basically helps you out if you've got one or two spots where you, that you could use it in. Same thing with a well pump. But, um, sometimes that's not feasible. I mean, because of the different, you know, styles and, you know, and what you have and as far as horsepower and, and head to pump against. But basically, um, I would recommend having a, a spare for your facility, especially your bigger pump stations. And it's just like rotating assemblies. I don't think y'all have them for the sludge pumps at the wastewater plant. And, um, uh, I think a gentleman just came up recently and replaced one of those for you and just happened to have one. But I know for us to get rotating assemblies from Gorman Rump, it's, uh, about eight weeks. So if it's down, it's down.
How many pumps are in each pump station? Would you say on average, is it just one? Is it two?
Two.
Two? So essentially we're down three pumps.
Yeah, well, yeah, if you're cutting your spares, yes.
Well, we would say Mari Heights is down.
Well, yeah, yeah. As far as the Mari, Mari Heights, those two are down and then you got one down and Route 301, yes.
Rough estimate on a price on a pump, you think?
I don't know what his horsepower was there. I only think, I think it was like around seven. So, I mean, probably in the neighborhood of, you know, five to eight grand.
And we, we need three, but a fourth would be good for having one spare tangible to move around in case of an emergency. Thank you.
I think basically that brought me to, I mean, you guys, there was some concern about with the other employees and speaking with them. That they had submitted some things, I guess, or whatever to be repaired. And there was, I guess, some issues as far as really knowing how much money that they actually had to spend on repairs and things of that nature. And then when we got into the conversation of that, um, they brought up about the USDA grants and the situations that they have there. And they said that staff has been called several times about the grants and the grant money. And having a completed, um, looking as far as the proper expenditures being listed and the audits being completed. As far as on that end and to basically within the next four months or the USDA was looking at possibly asking for their monies back. They said they've received these phone calls. Uh, I mean, I, I, I do not know what the, the whole gamut of issues are there. Don't pretend to, but if you guys are looking at spending monies on. Route two as far as replacing the sewer lines and things of, of that nature. And you've got some USDA questions as far as on that end. And they're saying, like I said, about the four month deal there. If that's true. Then, you know, that's maybe something that y'all wanna, you know, take a look at. And that's all I have.
Anybody have any further questions for William? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry. I just wanted to clarify one thing. It was, I guess, brought to my attention that there wasn't a lot of hand tools left around the facility.
Yeah, a, a lot of the, uh, the shovels and things, the hammers, things like that, um, that were in the back at one point. I did, as that's, these were pictures that I had taken of the facilities, um, but a lot of the. Hand tools that were once around, um. I don't see much of anything in your shop or in your, all, your other storage shop over here as far as, um, shovels or. You used to have shovels, axes, uh, hammers, uh, sewer snakes, all that. I don't see any of that. I mean, maybe they got it somewhere else. I don't know, but I don't see any of that.
William, one thing you brought to my attention, I rode down to take a look. So the John Deere tractor that we, um. I remember being on council, we had the big Caterpillar generator. And we kept it on a trailer. We moved it around. If a well, if we lost electricity, we needed.
Yes, you, you had a Caterpillar generator that was on a trailer. Um, it, it was basically had, uh, multiple settings on it to where you could do single phase or all, you know, three phase settings.
And so we still have that?
You have it, but it's not no longer trailer mounted. Uh, they've taken it off the trailer and mounted it permanently at well five.
Okay. And then we had that nice John Deere tractor with a PTO driven.
Yep. You still, you still have the John Deere. It's got a PTO, um, generator that can be run behind it. They currently have it stationed over at Bowling Green Meadows in case the power goes out.
So a nice tractor and piece of equipment is just sitting out in the weather in case electricity goes out?
Far as I'm aware, yes.
Had, had, I guess, one other thing that was stated in this meeting, uh, prior was that. One of the problems that we may have was due to a contractor that was, uh, given an agreement to dump sludge into our system, which. In the return caused us a pretty hefty repair cost.
Yeah.
Of approximately 30,000. So.
Yeah, back, uh. 16 or 17, I think going into 17, there was a, um, there was a backup on Mari Avenue. And the backup on Mari Avenue, uh, was founded, it was actually a collapsed line. At the time, uh, Sean Fortune contacted me, I was ju- just still helping out part-time. He said that the line was collapsed. Mr. Manster that was here at the time and Sean worked together to find a contractor to replace the line. At the same time, um, we were having to create a pooling station for the actual sewage to be pulled from. So the sewage basically he would could, the sewage truck could come by daily, pull from the sewage, uh, pooling station. Take it to the wastewater plant and dump it. It's kind of the same thing that's going on with what you have on Route two right now. It's raw, it's coming to you. It's, you were gonna get it anyhow. It's the same sewage. During that time, um, the contractor had asked, I guess, could he do a pump and haul agreement where he was dumping. A couple loads a day at the wastewater plant to offset some of the cost for pulling from the pooling station. And when that was brought to our attention, how many times he was, he was dumping three to four, five times a day. And we asked for it to come to an end. Um, it took us. Uh, pretty much a month, month and a half to, to get it to come to a close as far as that. And then I, we found him around town. It, it was being dumped into manholes. And then we found a, a lift station. And so we changed the locks on the lift station. Asked for it to not to be dumped in the manholes. And I believe Reese was coming on about that time as the town manager. And he asked us what was the major problem, uh, with number one problem with the wastewater plant and water system right on down the line. And, um, we all gave our answers and the number one answer I gave at the wastewater plant was the solids that was created. By the dumping at the wastewater plant. They stated that, um, they, they asked, how could we get rid of it? Any way you looked at it, if you didn't pay the guy that was pulling from over at Mari Heights. You still was gonna have to get rid of it in sludge. So basically you're still paying the sludge weight to get rid of it. If you did it dry or you could do it wet. It was affecting, getting to the point where is it affecting the plant? Not in what like as far as like your, what your limits were. But it was affecting the plant as far as just almost like you're looking at now to where you're kind of organically stuffed. And if you take on infiltration where you get hydrologically overloaded, it's gonna cause issues for you. So when the new regime came in, which was the Reese, Billy and the gentleman they hired with him. It was decided by those three at that time that they would pull it out liquid. So they pulled everything liquid. And took it to Spotsylvania and got rid of it to get the mixed liquors down at that time.
Understood. And the, I guess, back to the water samples. So they, those were taken for both wells or just one currently, current daytime?
I was told that both wells have had a sample taken. Uh, well, five's had two taken.
Okay.
One on a Friday, one on a Monday. Well, four has had one taken right after they were notified. I do not know the day that they were notified. I was told the day that we had the meeting that well five come back with a hot sample during that week sometime. And we met on Thursday, the, yeah, the 27th. So. Sometime during that week is when he supposedly got the, the bad reading and, and, um, notified the health department again like he was supposed to. And took another sample of that well. So you'd be awaiting both samples to, to see what the results are.
Thank you.
All right. Well, William, appreciate it. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
A lot, you know, a lot of good information. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You got anybody else? Are y'all done then? We can move on?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I do appreciate the county's assistance and their knowledge on this. But I do think it was completely disrespectful to me as the town manager to be handed this tonight at the beginning of this. Actually, it wasn't handed to me. It belongs to the clerk. I do not have this. I cannot address it without knowing it. I have addressed the things that I know about.
Yes, ma'am. Duly noted. All righty, uh, if we're done with, uh, new business, we can move on to unfinished business? All righty, unfinished business.
Uh, Mr.
Sir?
Mayor, there's a couple other topics there, but I, I'll, I'll leave it.
I had asked anybody with else's coming, nobody made, made a motion, you know, didn't make a movement at all. So you got more to, okay. All right. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
I'll say first off on this topic, I think we need to discuss as a council, maybe come to an agreement on this emergency operation agreement. Seeing that we are not meeting requirements, right? I, I guess this, do we need to move forward on that or?
I'd say we definitely need to move forward. Uh, I think we need a, we need a list, William, uh, of things that. You need from us to be done, to be compliant so you can come in. Maybe that's already been done. But we need to know, has discussions occurred as far as which y'all will be charging us for this emergency licensure?
It's strictly reimbursement.
And so, um, reimbursement for salary times benefit.
I guess one of the questions I probably forgot to ask, that I should have asked. Who is going to be the designated person from the town? Who, who will be?
Who will be the designated person from the town that will be working with me as far as making the decisions and pulling the triggers on? Are they getting prices or moving forward with prices or, um, you know, do you replace versus repair, you know, and, and, you know, as far as that issue? I mean, who, who do I work with is falling on, on that end? Who does the county work with on that end?
Well, you know, the limited staff we have, we used to have a water sewer trash committee where it would.
Right.
Would have been a great place to start. Um. Mr. Cully, could you come back up to? So if you were in our seat, what's the next steps? What do we need to do? Because I, I can add up a ton of money on some fixes. What's the, what's the immediate stuff we have to spend money on to be compliant so he doesn't lose his license? What's the stuff we gotta fix? How do we, how, what would you do?
Can I just interrupt just to answer William's question first? Who normally would you report to?
Well, normally, as far as for me, I'm gonna, I would go back to Joey and say, hey, this is the type of money I'm looking to spend. Are you okay with this? And then of course, we've got our procurement, uh, you know, policy that we follow as far as how much money we can spend. And before we get into POs and moving forward and.
Correct.
As far as on that end.
So for here for the town.
But here from the town.
Who would you have?
I would go to the town manager.
And let's address questions to her as well then. Because I, I really have to tell you here, there's, as far as I'm concerned, some shady crap going on. And I have a lot of legal concerns here, even if you all don't. And I'm just as ticked off as some other people because I'm not sure what you did at your Monday meeting. Because nobody else from council was told about it. Town manager wasn't, May wasn't. I get you can only have two people who were duly selected. However, we're only getting this as the town manager says now. We didn't have an opportunity to digest this information. As the two selected individuals. So if that's who you would go to, I think you should talk to the town manager. Because considering the stuff that has gone here for the past couple of years, I think she's done a good job. Tone it down. Seriously, Mark? Come on.
I mean, just. Just as a recommendation, when, when we had, when we had the meeting that day, as far as everything. We'd actually discussed maybe you guys seeing this before we brought it forward to digest it beforehand. And it was one of the, I did have that thought. I mean, as far as that, because I know it is a lot to take in. And when you think things are running okay or moving along okay and you, and when you got some personnel issues, when you, it, when you hear about the personnel issues and all this at one time. It's a lot to digest.
Well, you, you had the meeting, you created this excellent, you gave us terrific information here. I'm just trying to figure out why you needed the second meeting. Why did that have to happen on Monday? If you already had this to be disseminated to us and it wasn't.
Yeah.
So if there's better information.
That, that information was Monday. That was at the Monday meeting.
This?
Yes.
But you, you obtained it by doing the interview on July 27th?
Correct. And Monday was the 31st. So that, that document was created for Monday's meeting.
And you didn't think the town manager or anyone else should have privy to this or you just? Who, who called the meeting? Yes, please do, Mr. Sealy.
I will answer this because this was not a complete document. This was a walkthrough.
I know, it could be funny.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me, let me finish. Allison was at the initial meeting. Allison and Jeff Void had the opportunity to walk around to hear all of this firsthand. Even at our Monday meeting, there was more information in William's report tonight than there was on Monday. It was not complete on Monday, but I could only meet with two people and I have a schedule too. So I picked two people. I couldn't meet with everybody. Jeff Void had been there. Allison had been there. They were at the initial meeting. So I was down to who do I pick? Cause I only had Monday to do this. And William was, after the Monday meeting, there are additional things that are in this report. I saw you looking for things because they're not in there. They came later. So it wasn't complete. And this was the meeting where we were gonna talk about, you're hearing the same things with additions. That Mr. Stork and Mr. Hooley heard, exact same things. And we went on for three hours with this.
I was told about the drying bed and I was told about the, uh, the water sample and I addressed both of those.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
I am, I am not the villain in this. I'm just trying to help.
Looking for a villain. I'm just trying to get communication, which never happens in this place.
So I want to say there is, um, there should be a lot of indignation. But it, it doesn't, it does, it shouldn't be directed. it does, it shouldn't be directed at the bearer of the bad news or the walk around or participants in a meeting. The indignation should be carried back and carried back. And how did we get to the place that we're at now? And we shouldn't shoot the messenger. We, we should knuckle down and decide how we're going to fix the problem. Nothing that I want you to, you all take from this meeting, especially staff, is anything but thanks. Because William, I miss you from being, working for this town. You're a great asset. You gave a thorough, thorough report. We needed to hear. I wasn't asked, told, warned about the 27th meeting. There was one councilman there and a staff member there, but I could care less. I don't need to be at the, every meeting. I was asked, as well as Mr. Houli, could you come and look at this preliminary report? Because we're going to come to council, we're going to share it with everybody. I'm not indignant at all that I missed the 27th. Not at all. I have no hurt that Mr. Void was there and I wasn't. No problem. No problem. And nothing about this report do I want y'all to take away because you know what? We're brothers. I pay as many ta, I pay as much taxes to pay your salary as, as somebody in Ladysmith, right? So we should work together. We're going to work together and we're going to, we're going to fix this problem. But indignation, if we want to assign indignant, indignation, let's go back to when this started. Let's, let's dig back and we can do that later. This is not about hurting anybody's feelings. It's about drawing a line and fixing it moving forward. So let's get indignant about the problem, not who brought it or how it was brought. I appreciate you very much doing, this is a, you know, I don't understand a half of what you said, but I believe you. So thank you.
I thank him as well. Mr. Stork, this is not about indignation. This is about common respect that nothing ever happens on council here and the fact that people are not alerted to communications or, and given things at the last minute or told or found out or through whatever means. It's just, it's, it's the same with the responding of emails that no one bothers to do. I'm just asking for common respect and courtesy from council members. These gentlemen took their time out to came here, gave us an amazing report and of course, I'm more excited because needless to say, not to say anything about past employees here, but there's a lot of additional work to go on in regards to other things. And I think those are legal matters that need to be taken care of. It's not just about what's here.
Well, um, so I, I just want to reiterate one thing, a theme, and that is back in the day, since the beginning of time, we had committees and we worked through issues. So if we'd had a meeting to go to or two meetings to go to, the water sewer trash committee would be sent and they'd come back and report. We don't have that. So now we have a committee of eight, which is the, it's the dumbest thing I've ever been a part of. We all try to hash it out in a work session before a meeting. So we need, we need to thank these gentlemen. I'd like to, the question answered is, Mr. Cully, if this was your seat, what would you do? And then, then we need to look at ourselves, look at me. I'm willing to take responsibility since January of this year and talk about leadership and where leadership starts and where it ends, and we need to fix the problem. And there's nothing that's not fixable. It's going to be expensive, but we didn't get here overnight and we're not going to fix this overnight.
Oh, I agree.
So if you, if you were sitting in my seat, tell me step one, two, three, four and five.
Well, the first step I want is a letter requesting our help and that you, you agree in this emergency situation. The second thing, I'll answer a question that was asked earlier, we're going to bill you for time. We're already tracking our time. So we know when somebody is coming to do something for the town, whichever employee might, it's not always Willie. It's other, other, other operators. Um, we have got to get the things that are permit actually driven. So while it sounds not like a lot, that enunciator auto dollar is what allows you to operate the plant 10 hours a day instead of 24 hours a day. Otherwise, by permit, there needs to be a body standing in that plant 24 hours a day. So to me, that is the number one thing, mainly a telephone line. So it doesn't sound like it's not workable if it works with a telephone line. So that needs to be fixed. You've got, you've heard, you've got to fix the drying beds and it's already been addressed that those are being done. So I think then all the other aspects, you need to take down the list of things that will potentially become permit issues. You're UV, you've already appropriated funds for that. Why has that not been fixed? But it cannot be fixed with just the lights. The controller is a requirement of that as well. So it sounds like that, while there's money allocated, would be to find out where that is in process to make sure that is fixed. And it sounds like from Willie and our other operators, it's not working correctly. So it's not disinfecting. So that is a, a problem if your water's not being disinfected. So I think those are what I would, could see the critical things that, that I would want my staff to do. We've got to meet permit.
So we, we need to have an attorney to draft a MOU, emergency MOU?
I don't know if it needs to be, I would take a letter right now that you need the help if you want to work on that further than, as I stated to you before, every one of you is a citizen of Caroline and I look at you as, as citizens, just like in Ladysmith or any, in Dawn or anywhere else. So we're not here to make money off of you. We, we have enough to do in our own utility department. So I, I'm trying to lend you a hand and help you out. I think we can, in the overall MOU, save you money because I have the leadership in place that can operate another plant and can oversee your water system with some of our management that's already there, along with some of your existing employees and taking them on under county employees. I can't do it with no employer, with my current employees, we can't take over anything. I have enough management and stuff to be able to take over stuff with a permanent MOU if we get there. But this emergency one is just that. We're going to, it's, you know, here's how many hours we were here this week, this month, and we'll send you an invoice, expect to be paid.
With our current staff in the public works arena left standing, two guys, I guess.
Hmm, four, I thought.
Four guys. But nobody with the license. With our current.
Only a water license.
With our current people that are left standing and with the salaries that that represents, and then with our two that resigned, is it going to be a wash to have y'all come in? We're not going to have the salaries of the two guys that left?
In the permanent MOU, it shouldn't be, I would think. Now, Mr. Shebel hadn't finished that, but that's going to have basically, uh, you know, you'd have to explain that. It's how we do the one in Port Royal that we've done for a long time.
So what I'm trying to say is, it's not like we, we're, we're at the current salary levels, plus we got to add on y'all's salary. We're not paying two guys that left and we're taking you on.
Right, and we wouldn't need to hire them back.
Right. No, no. Okay.
Or anybody like them, I don't think, because the management and the operators are already in our system. Willie could explain how many of those licensed operators we have, but we have enough to oversee two plants. Then we, if we're going to add responsibilities to our employees, say our chief's operator, plant operator, I can't do that without probably adjusting his salary up.
Sure.
But it's not to be equal to another whole person.
Okay.
Or, or Mr. Stanley's. I'm going to say, hey, take on all this responsibility as superintendent of public utilities, but do it for the same pay. So there will be adjustments made to people that are taking on management, but that's not like hiring Willie completely.
Right, right.
You know, so yes, I think it's a savings for the, if I'm selling the permanent MOU, it's why it's worked out in, in Port Royal as well as it had, and it's easier here because you're closer. That's another 12 miles away that we got to ride up there, but luckily we have another county utility system up there too.
So you need a letter from us?
A letter saying, in this emergency, come in here and supervise our operation, fill out the forms that need to be and make sure that we stay in compliant. And then we will be constantly, if we see something, working with your staff to say, this is broken, it's got to be fixed. This is not optional. Then we'll give you a list of the optional things that if you don't take care of this and when it breaks, it's going to cost you even more. That thing he's talking about that's rattling around on the concrete, that's, that's somebody who's figured out what's going on with that or that's going to, I mean, I would, I would be mad if that didn't come to my attention if Joey was sitting on something like that. Well, I don't have the money to fix it because we're going to the board of supervisors going, you don't have to, you know, but we've got a problem we need to fix. So those are the type of things that you, you may not want to hear, but it's going to cost you more in the long run. And I think that's part of what we're at right now is over the years, and there's not anything to do with Allison. This is just over the years, there've been some decisions like that, that things have just have waited and worn out.
We didn't, we didn't get to this position in one year, two years, three years.
No, this goes back a little bit.
This goes back a long time.
And it's easy to do. It's, I mean, it's, it's money and, you know, put a Band-Aid on it, but sometimes that, that does come back. But I think if you give us a letter, we will stay on top of it, make sure you stay compliant and give you, you know, whatever help we can of, hey, this needs to be fixed. And if you have trouble getting that bit out, we have the ability to, to do that for you and, and, and try to get these things in. But I, somebody's got to figure out why the, what you have appropriated hadn't gotten done.
Tomorrow, we'll have you a letter as soon as Allison finishes writing it. We'll sign it and get it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Just, just on the paperwork, as far as that end? The paperwork was initially started just as a walk around and basically what it was made for, it was basically to show is we come in as, on an, an emergency basis, we wanted you guys to know what everything looked like before we even touched it. That's where that started from. But then once the list grew, then there was some concern and that's how council members and board members and everybody else got involved. So sorry for the.
No, 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 no. I'd just like to say that once that meeting occurred, I tried and I, you know, we're running on two days of trying to get in touch with everybody. So I, I made it to about 50% of the council. I didn't make it to the other. So I, yeah, I did what I could to pass that information along. So that's, thank you guys for your time and.
Thank y'all.
What else you got for us, Arthur? You said you had, uh.
Do you feel like we need, do we need a motion for that letter? Is that something, um, I mean, I'm in favor. I think it's something that we need to do.
I, I'm fine to make a motion on it. I, uh, Mr.
It's up to y'all.
Mr. Cully said he was fine with it not being drafted by a, say, legal representative. So if it comes from the town, I make a motion that we draft a letter to Caroline County for an emergency operation of the wastewater facility.
And authorize it to mayor to sign it? Okay?
A second.
So I got, I got a first, I got a, and I got a second. Um, let's do a roll call on this one. Arthur?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I meant to say to any discussions. All right, water and wastewater? You want to refreeze that then?
I'll make a correction to that to add in water.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion to have the county do an emergency, uh, running of our operations for water and sewer with the mayor signing the letter. All right, uh, so Arthur?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Motion carries 100%. Well, you'll have your letter tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there's two other topics, but if I can make another motion, bring the unfinished business back up if you want to, if you think it's going to be time permitting and we're going to need a recess on those other two topics.
I mean, I don't know what you got. I mean, that's up to you. If you want to, you want to bring him back, you know, put this from the side for a couple few minutes and bring up the unfinished. What do y'all want to do? I mean, I don't know how much longer we're going to be with the other.
Two topics were discussion around the USDA loan and payments and the other was seeking legal representation for the town.
I mean, I think we ought to take care of the unfinished.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to move unfinished business before the other two items.
I'll second your motion.
All right, we got a first and we got a second. Uh, Jeff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Aye. Unfinished business. Jean, this is you. Petty cabs. So will be, would y'all pleasure on this? How do y'all want to handle this? How do you want to approach it?
Mr. Mayor, in the, in the break between the two meetings, did you find out any more legal advice?
On, no. On what?
Did you consult our town attorney about a termination date inside that?
Oh, yes, I did. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. On this draft letter, I know there had been a couple, uh, people that had expressed interest in a time limit on this draft. Item number four, second page, says this license may be terminated by the license, licenser or for any reason without any liability whatsoever to licensee. So it's in there that the town at any time, if they decide that this thing doesn't get adapted at all, uh, by, you know, ordinance or whatever, then it can be canceled.
So Mr. Mayor, did you call the town attorney and say, hey, why didn't we put a timeframe in here? And she said, I did, it's number four?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I told her the council was looking at one to amend it and one, one council said, was it legal to do that since we had the draft? And I, she said, yes, but it's already in there.
Mr. Mayor, so we have a, I'm going to have to go to the next question. So we have a legal agreement with representation because that was one of the new business items to discuss seeking legal representation that our town doesn't have, so.
Right, but the original way that Andrea, when she departed ways, she said that she would help us afterwards until we found somebody else.
So has town council been presented, uh, contract or temporary MOU or anything?
No, sir. No, sir.
So we have no legal documents stating that we have somebody providing the town with legal assistance after a termination date?
No, sir, but I don't question a lawyer's abilities, especially when they've been serving us for years. Oh, sir.
Understood. I'm just trying to understand the process that may have occurred. It sounds like.
Well, she's the one that drafted this up too, so.
I mean, what I would like to see happen is we all take this agreement, review it, study it, see if we have any comments and the next meeting that we reconvene, we can discuss it again and see if we can come to some sort of resolution.
Me personally, I would like to set a public hearing to draft the proposed ordinance that accompanies this topic at our next scheduled meeting, but that's me.
And in that discussion, who's going to pay for it? You're going to have to address that issue as well.
Mr. Mayor, that would go back to who, I think the town manager can answer that question. It depends on the amount of work that's completed throughout that process, is my correct in saying that?
Yeah, but I mean, we did, you know, we did talk about this at the last meeting that we'd give her a permit to operate until such time that we do come up with an ordinance. Uh, so I mean, it's, if Dan is talking about wanting to table it till next month and y'all do that, we're still talking about the agreement. The ordinance is something totally different. It would have to be generated up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, a couple, a couple of things. Uh, would it, would it be all right if I were to, uh, address the applicant?
Sure.
Hey, Ms. Young, could you come up to that podium for a sec, please? And it looks like they turned the mic off. If you could turn it back on. Uh, thank you. Um, on, on the, the draft license that we have, there are a, a few aspects of it that basically beg a couple of questions to you. Uh, you know, I, I know you don't have a copy. Maybe we should get you a copy of it, but.
Is this it?
You did get a copy. There we go. Okay, cool.
I got a copy tonight. May I ask, where did this come from?
This, this arrived.
How did this come about?
A, a short time before the meeting. This was, you know, because, because again, we don't, we don't have, you know, full town attorney at this point, you know, due to resignation. Uh, and, and like I was saying, she, she was kind enough to get this to us.
Okay.
Uh, so this is, is good that we have, have something to go from. But it was a little, what we, what you could call last minute. Um, so.
Could I make a comment?
Hi, I think most of y'all know me. I'm Kathy Hancock, recently retired attorney. And I'm here to support my friend Jean and her petty cab venture. But I got to tell you, I, I could not advise her to sign this with this paragraph four in it that says the town can terminate her license for any reason at, I presume at any time without any notice. I can't let her sign that. Nobody would, nobody in their right mind would sign that. So, you know, I've, I've sat here and listened to you all tonight. I don't normally come to these meetings, but I've sat here and listened to you all tonight. And your, our sewer system apparently is, no pun intended, in the toilet. The water system is woeful. There's.
Can I, can I stop? This isn't public comment, Kathy. I apologize. We're talking about Jean's, uh, deal, so.
I think it's totally germane. I.
I'll get back to that. Y'all, y'all have let those situations go on and have not addressed them. And you are giving this woman all kinds of grief about a little, simple, small business that would benefit the town. I do not understand it.
I apologize. I see where you're going with that now.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I'm probably, I'm going to go out on a limb here, maybe get sanctioned and shut down. Three to four times a year, I have a horse drawn carriage, a hearse, that I use here in town to transport on funerals. So, I, I've never been asked to, to sign one of these things. So, going back to my initial comment, straining at gnats, swallowing, swallowing elephants. I, I never thought we should have even gotten to the point of needing a license or a franchise. I, I just, I don't agree with it. But we directed our town managers to draft this thing. Now, I agree with Ms. Hancock, who is an attorney, who is a former mayor of this town, that it's probably not worded well. But how much longer, what are we communicating to our prospective other businesses? What are, what are we telling folks about, come to Bowling Green and do business by straining at gnats and swallowing elephants?
I, I wanted to speak to that, Mr. Stork.
Please, help me understand.
That was why I was trying to bring her up there. Uh, no, it's just like, I, I also agree that it is a little bit loose. Um, you know, saying that we could cancel for basically any reason, you could easily argue that benefits us. You know, it certainly benefits us, I suppose. But yeah, if you have an issue with that, I totally understand it. It would be, in my mind, and, you know, not being a lawyer, but in my mind, having a, a date on there would, would make more sense for me, 60 days, 90 days, or an actual calendar date, whatever. And, and that would be more protection for you in, in that way, I would think, you know, while the, the permanent solution is done. Because when we directed staff to come up with this, that was for a temporary solution, not a in perpetuity, uh, solution. So, the, we were always told that we should go with, with a permanent one. But I, I was totally in support of, of some sort of temporary one. But, um, when I had you come up, uh, I wanted to point out number one, that said, the license is limited to the areas identified on the attached map. Obviously, there's no attached map because, well, she didn't know what your map was. And, and we don't have a map yet. And, but we could get that from you. So, what I was thinking, um, is we could, uh, at least use this as a baseline. But, you know, like, if you're unhappy with it, then that's all the more reason that we have to revise it. You know, because if you're being told not to sign it, you know, go with what your friend that has a, you know, reputation for being right says. So, do follow that. Um, but we need to get this temporary solution, one that, one that works. You know, and unfortunately, we, we do need to do things with, within the law. But, um, we, the, the next scheduled meeting is obviously the September meeting. But that goes back to my comments from earlier that I thought we were signing extra weeks. So, I was under the impression that we do need to continue meeting. Um, we just rearranged the agenda again to, to talk about this, but we still have to talk about the attorney situation. So, whether we're interviewing town managers, potential town managers, potential town attorneys, or addressing this, we need to continue meeting. And like, this is why I had asked you before, like, you know, you had said you were going on, on a short vacation. So, you know, one more week to try to finalize this and get the other information that would be required, because we would need to see that map. And there are going to be some other questions for you. You know, the, the, it was nice that you, you sent that business plan to us, but there, there's a couple other things that would be helpful to know. Uh, but in, in theory, I, I, I like the aspects that I see here. But again, we only just, just got this too. So, it would benefit us to digest it a little bit as well. Um, and that, that's about where, where I'm at.
Mr. Boyd, do you, do you humor me for a second? Do you see how, how, do you see how this makes us appear?
Yeah, like idiots, by the way.
We're putting, we're putting our citizens through a rigmarole. And do you see the perception that it gives of us?
Well, they just said they didn't like it either, this. So, what other options do we have?
Well, she said number four. I mean, we have the right to change this draft and how we want, want it to read. It doesn't have to stay like it is.
We, we don't have, yeah, so we would have to excise that artificially put a date and make up a map.
If number four is an issue, we can say we give her a year, you know? And that's plenty of time, get everything worked out, she gets going with it, you know, if that works for her or if that works for everybody else. I'm just saying, it can be changed. All we got to do is vote in the motion to change it.
I, I just, I just cannot believe we're, we are where we are. Because if, if I'd have been asked, if I'd have been working in Town Hall that day, and I was a staff member, and someone said, I'd like to get a business license. Okay, cool. Fill this application out. I mean, I hope we don't start straining at everybody that turns in an application for business. We're going to bring them all to council and, and dissect everything? Like I said, if we slice it thin enough and put it on a microscope, we're going to find fault with everything, everything.
This is so, this whole thing is so over the top for just what I want to do. I, I mean, no other business in town is put through this.
Because I, I think the understanding and the challenges, because it is a different type of business, it's a use. However, frankly, for me, I don't want a license agreement. I just wanted an ordinance that protects everyone, protects you, and move on. This is two months now. We need an ordinance. Something has been created. Prepare it, review it, and then just approve it.
To go through an ordinance, how many months are we talking? Two?
It's, it's already here.
No, that's not, we're near.
Just it needs to be massaged.
We don't, we don't need to overtalk each other, please. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
So, la- last, last meeting, right, Mr. Webb made that motion to draft up this license agreement, correct? That is here, it arrived here today. At the same time, I had asked the town manager to, to look into a petty cab ordinance, right? Because the, the town attorney at that time said, hey, you're going to need an ordinance, because it's, it has to deal with the operation of the business on the streets. All right? And we've understood that the mayor reported back that VDOT may have some questions or concerns about it. So, she did. She provided that. It's here. This document right here provides everything on both the applicant and the town's benefit, right, to, to cover them. And it asks all the questions we have that we're sitting here discussing right now. It's in this ordinance. I'm asking us, as a council, to place this on the next available meeting in a public hearing format, because we got to legally have this ordinance out for a public hearing for comment so that we can approve it, so that we can move this along. I'm not asking to hold any business up. I'm just asking that we do it the right way and get it done the first time. And here it is. It's right here. It states, when she, she comes in here, and she'll have an opportunity to provide feedback to this in the public hearing, and so will any other citizen. There's, there's a decal fee. We pulled this from another locality that has a petty cab. And it states in here, it's good for one year. So, that answers the question. She will be able to operate that business for one year. It's the same with the golf cart ordinance that we have currently.
Well, see, getting the decal is, just like with the golf carts, it ensures that it, it went through a safety inspection. It ensures we have a certificate of insurance. We're covered, she's covered. It, it all works great, you know?
And I may be missing something with the franchise license agreement. I will admit right now, I don't understand all that.
I don't understand it either at all.
I, I would say, turn it over to the town manager. Would we?
But.
I know the price topic had come up, right? If there's certain, I think, work done, it changes or could impact that. Is that correct? Depending on what's done before the public hearing?
Uh, yes, but I'm actually, I'm willing to, I'm giving as a gift of my own time the, the, the creation of it. I'll work with Andrea and Kathy, make sure that it's, I'll do that. So, it's there, but there still is a fee for advertising the public hearings. So, council would need to decide who pays that fee. It's, um, about a $500 fee to add, to add petty cabs to our ordinance. But the other $250, I'd be more than happy to give as a gift.
No. Uh, Arthur, was that a, was that a motion I heard you trying to make?
Well, I, let me ask this, and maybe the town manager, Mr. Mayor, you could, do we need the license agreement if we have an ordinance in place?
So, right, so these are two separate issues. The license agreement was so that, it was temporary until the ordinance was in effect. And so, a time limit on it would work if council would like town manager to, uh, work with, uh, the town attorney and their attorney on number four. Uh, I can do that if you would, if you, if you would like me to, to finalize this with the, the attorneys.
Well, we can just change it tonight.
We can move forward. But if the town council prefers to see it again, um, then, then, then we can bring it back to town council rather than to finalize it with attorneys.
Ms. Fincham, where, when did this proposed ordinance, this generic thing, where did, when did it hit this table and where did it come from?
I, I did this. And the, um, I didn't know how to do a license agreement. Um, this is what the town attorney, uh, said was a temporary fix. Um, but the ordinance, the petty cab ordinance, I reviewed several ordinances throughout the state and the, and the county, I mean, the, um, and throughout the United States. And I, this is, this is generally from Norfolk. It is from a city. And, um, so the town attorney said that, I, I sent it to her for a review. And she said that she would pare it down to make it fit more into what a town, to a town ordinance rather than a city ordinance. And so, um, she's working on that. And this is what needs to go to public hearing. So, there's two issues. One is what does council want to do with the temporary license and, and feel comfortable doing with that? And then the other issue is the permanent. So, the permanent one that goes, it has to have a public hearing. So, it's, uh, doesn't need to go through planning commission, because not in the zoning ordinance, but it needs to come back for public hearing. And it just requires advertising. So, um.
There is so much work involved on, if we use this as a guide, I mean, just flip through it. I mean, in this thing, it's suggesting the charges be made, collected, or not to exceed $2 per block, $25 per half hour.
Yes, so this is.
This is something in Central Park where you got a bunch of rickshaws fighting over who can be on the street. This is Bowling Green. We don't need this. We don't need this. We should have given her a business license when she walked in, period. Period.
I'm just confused, I guess, obviously. So, we don't need any ordinances in the town. We don't need any code. We don't need text amendments. We need nothing, basically, here. We just give people, do what they want, because frankly, in this town, people do what they want anyway. So, I am all for giving Jean this, because I think it is a great idea. I'm also with Bonnie. I work at a historic property, so this is enormous. But at the end of the day, an ordinance, according to the state, is required. So, make the ordinance, clean out the minutia from whatever's there, make it permanent, so it's done, deal. And we don't need a license agreement. Not sure why, but it was brought up in the last meeting. So, how fast can we just move through? For me, just waive the $500, let the town pay for it, and move ahead then.
I'll make that as a motion. How about that?
And what's that motion saying, sir?
To schedule the public hearing. Let, let's just do it, like, I've, I've been talking about having to do extra meetings. So, the earliest we could do is two weeks?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
You have to advertise it.
That, that's what I'm talking about. How, how, how many times you have to advertise it?
Next month, we should be able to.
You, you have to advertise it twice, I believe. Twice. So, it needs three weeks. And it needs me, they need four days in advance to send it to the paper.
I need to rewrite this. Oh, this is going to be, you got to print this whole thing?
No, no. As I said, the town attorney has, has said that she will help me reduce this. This is 10 pages, and it, it has a lot of minutia, as was pointed out. This, this was just a draft, because this is what I had to offer to the town council.
Can you have something ready to go to print to the, uh?
You don't have a town attorney. So, I can have something ready, because I'm sure that the town attorney will, the former town attorney will help me, and I can talk to Kathy. And, um, so between the three of us, we can get this ready.
Well, Kathy, you want to, you want to represent Jean? Is that what you're doing? You're her legal?
Well, I was.
Well, you are now. You are now. All right?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll give a second to Mr. Boyd.
And we have a second there, uh, for, uh, from Arthur, from, uh.
Hold on one thing, one, one thing I want to add. Jean, I want you to have this, but you had been saying petty cab and golf cart. There's nothing in any of this for the new golf cart. Are you not going to do the golf cart? Do we need to include it? Would we go to include it? We need to include it now. If not, then, I mean, if we don't, and you want to use it, you're not going to be able to use it if we don't include it.
And again, that, whoops, again, that is the only. Reason, that's the only reason that, uh, the town attorney suggested that I ask for a, uh, a, a business plan, so that we could make sure that everything was covered that so she could do what she wanted. So, that's, that's why, that's why we asked for it. I don't know why.
I don't figure same golf cart. I figure just same petty cab. So, you would need, I mean, they ask for, you might have to go in there and do some amendments, saying, I'm going to use a golf cart too, possibly, or whatever. Have that opportunity out there. So, if we pass that law, and it's, we're saying you can use a golf cart or a petty cab, say, you're free to go.
Get you one of them six seaters?
Allison, I have one question.
Go ahead.
You know, so if we do this ordinance, does that do away with the franchise stuff?
I, I'm sorry.
I'm just making sure that.
I don't know. I, I, I don't know for sure. But, um, the town attorney did say, I, I'd have to double check with her, but she did, she did say this was okay. But I, I need to double check about the franchise. We'll have it all ready, whatever it is.
So, I mean, okay. So, our goal is to have it all by our next meeting. And we'll vote on it, and it's done.
That's, that's a motion, correct, Jeff? Want to repeat it, please, sir? So, we get it right? Okay.
Um, I, I, I was headed towards the, the extra meeting that we have in the month, you know, at the three weeks from now, rather than the four. But if that's not going to get the support.
I'd rather, I'd rather make sure that they have enough time to collaborate to get it right.
That doesn't make sense.
Because it takes time to get it into the papers. You know, she's already operating now.
Right.
So, you know, that's not going to change anything.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll just not acknowledge that part.
Who's, wait, who's already operating now?
Are you not?
No.
Oh, I saw you riding people around. I thought you was operating.
It's legally a bicycle.
Oh, I was just wondering, okay. I was waiting on my ride.
Go for as many rides as you need.
Could I, could I, could I make a suggestion, maybe?
Maybe.
And I apologize for getting a little heated a while ago. That's not my normal, that's not my normal style. Um, but I, I don't really see any problem with this license agreement, other than this paragraph four, which says to me, you all could sign it today, and then tomorrow, the town could say, oh, we're terminating the agreement.
Right.
So, that is, that's the problem. Um, but I think it would be very simple to fix this. And, I mean, between Allison and myself.
Do it tonight.
I think we could fix this possibly tonight.
The ordinance is separate from that.
And the ordinance is separate.
I was just trying to get through step one.
I do agree that, that there needs to be an ordinance, because it's not addressed.
All right, we, so, so we have a motion on the floor. Uh, you want, you want to go to the next meeting, Jeff? Is that what you're saying or not?
That, that seems to be the, the consensus from us. So, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, what's the date on the next meeting? Somebody help.
So, you don't want the.
Valerie and I were trying to get a meeting for the 10th to interview people.
Well, they, they can't do it that quickly. That, that's the, the idea there.
So, we're looking at the first, September 1st. I'm sorry, September 7th.
September 7th.
Yeah.
So, you don't want it to be handled by the town attorney, town manager, and their representative?
Well, is there, I, I don't know if you've had a second, or are we in discussion, or have we got a second? Or has it been a motion?
Haven't even really completed the motion yet.
Well, I've been trying to get you to repeat it, but we've already had first and the second. I want you to repeat it so we can move on with it.
If you've had the first and the second, then I think we're in discussion. Let me just throw this. Let me just throw this out there. Is there a way to do two motions and get the train rolling down the track of this beautiful ordinance? And then also to direct our staff and her attorney to change paragraph four that says this is good till the end of the year?
No, that, that should be separate. I was just trying to get the ball rolling by getting like the meaty step first.
Get it rolling and then I'll make the next one.
All right, okay. So.
But, but I need to, so Allison, where was that disconnect at exactly?
I just wanted to make sure that, that the town council wanted to wait on the temporary license agreement rather than it being, having the town.
I believe they're gonna talk more about that after the ordinance.
And then we'll talk about that after. All right, so we got a motion now. I've also had, in discussion, somebody wanting to amend the motion. Valerie? Where council paid for the.
Oh, I was just asking because I had mentioned you'd wanna just include the $500 in there so.
Oh, yeah, sure.
That the town pays for it?
Sure, sure. I amend my motion, sure. Get it done.
Our motion has been amended to also add that the town takes up the fee for advertising for the public hearing. And we had a second by, was that you, Arthur? Who seconded it?
I, I did second and that was without the added portion.
Okay.
And again, I, I apologize because, you know, I, I just wanna make sure that the town and the applicant are both covered throughout this process. Our, our other ordinance that is related to this specifies Virginia law 46 dot 2 dash 472, which is about operation of motor vehicles and insurance policy.
Yes, sir.
So I wanna make sure that that is somewhere in this license agreement if we need to go down that or somewhere on this pedicab if we go down that route.
You got it.
Just wanna make sure everyone's covered. I don't wanna sit here and push things through. I wanna make sure we're, we need to as a governing body for our, our citizens and the applicant, so.
So are you standing on your second then?
Arthur, I, I'm, I'm a little confused because I thought Jeff made a motion to develop.
I seconded it, but now there's been an amendment to the motion to waive the fee.
Yeah, but he's talking about developing an ordinance.
An ordinance to have a public hearing.
And that's not the license agreement. That's a separate thing.
Correct. And I added in there in a discussion that I would like to see it referencing the code section, whether it's in the license agreement or the ordinance.
Gotcha.
What, you want me to amend my motion to include that?
I'll, I'll give a, I mean, I, historically, I'd have to lean on somebody here. If we, do we, do we waive public hearing costs?
That's up to y'all to do.
It's, it's, if, if we direct staff to do the advertising, that's what that.
I'm in favor of it.
All right, so I am too. So when this takes off like a rocket and the next three companies come here to pedal against her, why is it fair she has to pay for the ordinance and they don't have to? Or we gonna make them pay that $500 too?
I, I could explain that, but then we'd be here even longer.
Then don't explain it.
All right, so are you withdrawing your second, sir?
No.
No, I'll, I'll, Mr. Stewart, can I ask one question? Did the town pay for the ordinance on the golf carts? Right? Because there was no single individual that was requesting an ordinance for golf carts, probably, right? The town probably footed the bill on that ordinance for the public hearing. I know it's a long time ago, but it, would that be?
Well, I, I think, I'm trying to think, you know, when I built a crematory in King George County, there was no word in their ordinance about cremation. And I had to do, I, I didn't, I don't think I paid for, I could be wrong, but, you know, I just think what we put this prospective business person through is just wrong. And to say, I'm all for it. I love it. It's a great idea, but it, it just rings hollow. So we gotta get this thing over with, get it done. Let's just get the ordinance right, but at the same time, let's get the wording right and get this, let it operate and just put the end of the year and we'll have it all done by then.
Okay, I, I second the amendment.
I'll give a second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a second by Arthur. He, he did come back with a second. So we have a motion on the floor to provide Allison to drum, to finish up on the, on the ordinance, advertise it to the paper, we'll pay for it and also make sure that the state code is in there for, was it insurance, Arthur?
It's the same code section that's referenced in the bowling ball golf cart ordinance.
All right. Have we discussed it enough that I can call the vote? All right. Jean?
No.
Aye.
Yes, Dan? Valerie?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Arthur?
I'm just gonna abstain.
Abstaining for what reason, sir?
I've got more legal questions and we don't have legal representation.
All right, sir. We got one abstaining. So I got one, two, three, four, I got five yeses.
And I'm gonna tell you why.
Two no's.
We should not pay for the advertising. You see how much money we, that we need to come up with here tonight and then if we, are we gonna pay? I mean, here we are working for nothing. We, we're paid no salary now. So when these people come and then we're gonna pay for that too? That's why I'm saying no.
Okay, gentlemen, ladies. Where are we at next before I move on to Arthur? Anybody bringing this draft up for tonight's vote and with changes or whatever? This draft, license. David had talked about it and sounded he wanted to get it done and.
So David, are you, are you suggesting that we also develop, you know, revise this license agreement so she can be operational at our.
I'm sorry, I had a little bit of a lapse.
At a meeting.
I got lulled into a little sleep there. All right, so I make a motion that we direct our town staff to work with Ms. Young's attorney to change paragraph four to, at the end of this year or a date, you know, a reasonable date so that we can get our, our legal stuff done, get her up and running as soon as that's done. And as soon as that's done, agreeable to staff and her attorney, you sign it.
Okay.
I'd like to just stand on there.
I have that motion. Do I have a second?
I just wanna add in there that you had said you talked to VDOT.
Right.
We need to wait back for VDOT because VDOT could say no.
Right, well, you're right.
So, because you're operating that on a public road or motorized bicycle. I mean, they didn't say no on the golf carts, but they said they were gonna check into it and we're gonna have to wait. That's one reason why paragraph four is kind of there because if they come back and say no, then we can't allow it in the town. So just so you know that.
Well, we can, we can make that part of the motion that if it comes, you know, barring all other situations, come back good that, you know, she can operate. But VDOT, he, he didn't sound like he would have any problem with it. He's never been presented with it. It could just fall right in front of the golf carts. Were you staying in the 25 mile an hour zones, nothing higher than that and, you know.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask for clarification?
Yes.
It's, in the discussion, it wasn't just article four. It was adding the map and, and Mr. Holy's comments. So is that also included in the motion?
Does that need to be in my motion about the temporary thing?
About the state?
Yeah, well, cause it is said, so, I mean, we, yes, we need to work out a map and it's probably just like the golf carts. It's gotta be a 25 miles per hour, wherever that is, and you can only cross over a 35, just similar. So, I mean, she's obviously not gonna take this thing on 301, so.
She can pedal faster than 25 mile an hour, 45 mile an hour too.
Right.
It's, it's all within the historic.
Absolutely, okay.
You work on it.
Okay.
Doctor it upright.
State code, article four and number four. And get a map.
So, so we got a motion, I need to second.
I'll second it.
I got a second by Randy.
Yeah, I got a discussion on that.
All right, go ahead and discuss it, sir.
The phrasing of this motion, are, are you actually asking that we preemptively sign off for our now not really there on staff attorney to work with our town manager to come up with something that doesn't come back to us for review?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind you that the town attorney still needs to sign this even, even after we finish with it. So you can be assured that it's all complete.
Yeah, my, my concern is that like she's not really our town attorney anymore.
That is true.
Yeah, and, and so like I have issue with that.
She's volunteering her time with us until, just like Allison is not really.
Mr. Mayor, that's why I'd asked if there was any documentation that had been given in the council stating after the resignation of the town attorney that there was an agreement that the town attorney would provide services at a cost, at no charge voluntarily. I, that's what I was asking.
I haven't, I haven't heard her mention anything about any cost at all.
You better ask.
And it's better, and it's better to have her on hand than not to have one at all because if, what you're saying is right, if it gets down to it, why even have a meeting when you gotta have legal representative or everything when you can't decide what you're gonna vote on because there's a motion being made, right? Is this right or that right? So I agree with you, but at least she's willing to help out. So, and I don't know her reasons for leaving or anything, so.
If I, if I could direct one question.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Get clear, clear clarity here, I guess. You have a COI? I would take it for this.
A COI?
Certificate of Insurance.
I'm working on that right now. I'll have it.
Okay. All right, so we have the second. Do I have any other discussions before we go to roll call? Arthur?
Mayor, I know I'm completely out of order, but I would like to hear that proposed that you're voting on again. I'd like to hear the wording again. Could you repeat it?
Arthur? Yes, you said?
You're going to the roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And this is for, to, to sign the license agreement?
For us, for them to fix the license agreement and re-sign it and get her, get her going, yes, with all the stuff added in.
Can I clarify, wouldn't council need to review the amendments? That's what I was getting at. This is a draft. We would need to review the amendments. Are you saying make a motion now to let them make amendments and we just approve it without review?
The motion was directed from down that way, sir. So let him repeat what he would like or whoever made the motion. David, I'm sorry.
I hope I can do this. So the motion was to modify, have staff to work with the applicant's attorney to modify this license agreement, to give a sunset to it, number four, a date, end of the year, whatever. Add in the language that Arthur mentioned. And if those are the only things done, direct the attorney and the, and the mayor to sign it.
And that is legal to, to do on these drafts from our point right here. So if we say that, that's what goes on it. So now we're back to the roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll abstain and the reasoning on that is because I would like to, before I give a yea or nay, see a final draft on anything that I'm putting my name behind.
Randy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
I, I, I'm actually gonna have to agree with, with Arthur on that. I'm, I'm abstaining for the same reason. I would have liked to have seen it next week, but I'll still be happy to see it.
Jean?
Aye.
We got four ayes. I'm sorry, five ayes, two abstain. Motion passes. We will get you a license agreement here within the next few days for you to be operating until such time the ordinance gets, gets done.
Thank you, council.
Get, get your attorney, who I appointed tonight to help, and we will get this handled, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we need to take a little recess or something before Arthur gets started again? Bathroom break or something?
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like the town attorney just sent a new draft, so I will, I'll go print it off.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's, let's give it five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever y'all, somewhere like, like that.
I'd like to ask, since Mr. Manster has been assisting, our financial picture, not just our loans, but our cash on hand. How, where is it? How's it broken down? Help me understand, Mr. Manster. We used to always joke and call this thing a lockbox, where we used to put the water sewer availability fees. That really wasn't a box, I know that, but where was that money? How much money was in that lockbox back in 2016 when you left? Would you, do you mind going to the mic just? So, you know, we're behind the eight ball. We've had so much turnover in staff. We've got a part-time that's come in, in the middle of a mess. Where, how much, where's our money? Where are the counts? What's in them?
Yeah, as far as the previous years that you asked about, I really can't recall those amounts. I can tell you that the town manager and I have, you know, talked about a number of different options. And as I mentioned at the previous council meeting, we're taking steps to, to correct the situation. We believe that in hiring the, the staff that, that we're looking at now and in working with an accountant that will be able to generate the numbers, which will enable us to call in an auditor and create those audits that are missing.
So you don't, you don't have, at this stage, and I know you've only been helping now for a couple of weeks, but you don't have a grasp on where we are financially?
As far as specific numbers are concerned, not at this time.
Okay.
I, I can tell you that there are adequate funds to, you know, keep, keep everything going, you know, and to pay the bills. As far as, you know, major expenditures, I think Allison has some figures on, on those numbers.
So Allison, when you came into this mess, did anybody say, the lockbox, the water sewer availability fees, that we all decided that we're not gonna spend, we're not gonna use to do stuff? We use it for the plant upgrade when and if it needs it. Do you ever remember hearing anything about that, how much that was? Where, is it all just co-mingled in a checking account?
I don't know where it's co-mingled in with the checking account.
There was a, and correct me, I don't wanna interrupt, but correct me if I'm wrong. I think in the last 60 days, two meetings, we, somebody made a request to re-establish the water and/or sewer to keep it separate than the general fund count, right? So I think in the past, that was intermingled. I'm trying to get back to your answer. That was intermingled, my understanding, into the general fund. And we were trying to bring it back to the way it probably should be, where you got a water and sewer fund, and then you got a general fund. And you're not, I think what was happening was the expenses were coming out of the general fund to, to pay water and sewer.
Because I can tell you, that lockbox money would come in mighty handy right now. It's what we gotta do down at the, at the plant.
What I can tell you is that we have a little over $3 million. And from July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023, there was an increase of 200,000. That included the COVID money that we, the, the ARPA grant money that we got.
So that $3 million, $3 million figure is, how much of that is ARPA?
So a million, 1.2 million is ARPA. We spent a little. We spent it on software, new software, and we spent it on a small amount of things, such as, most of which are improvements to our plant. But, I'm sorry, let me go back. We, 200,000 is not including the ARPA money. So we actually, I, I actually expected a more revenue of 450,000. Just because we had 300 and some of bank stock, 330, and we don't have a Director of Community Development, and I was part-time. So that saved 50,000, and then 90,000, and then 300. And, and anyway, it was about 450,000 that I was expecting. But in fact, although our numbers aren't perfect, that you saw in your budget, they, we still, just looking at your bank account, you still have 200,000 more revenue than expenditures for fiscal year '23.
Okay, so $3 million as a total, a million two is ARPA. So I, man, that's, I don't even count that as.
If I could correct, 200,000 went to the software, if I'm recalling correctly. And 100,000 of that, we just placed in for the water breaks that we just had. So take out 300. Six, and then we just appropriated the 600 of the sewer repair, so ARPA.
Okay, so, all right, so, so 3 million minus 1.2 gone is a million 800,000.
Uh, no, we have 3 million. 3 million that I looked, uh, let's see, that was right at the beginning of July, when I looked at that number. So that included all payments that had gone out for any breaks prior to that date in July, just, just a few weeks ago.
So 3 million minus the ARPA is how much?
So, no, don't minus the ARPA out, because we didn't have the ARPA separate. The ARPA was just put right into, we have, we have one account. And so the ARPA was put into that account. Everything's put, put together. And so I don't know, now, previous staff that knows how to use Bright software would have known. But now we're transitioning to the new software, and another, in another while, Trish will know, but, but it, it was just last fiscal year and this fiscal year are going to be a little odd as we transition.
So.
Could I jump in for a second?
Well, I have one more question. I, I just, so I don't know, I don't know how much we have. I can't, I can't figure it out.
So everything put together, including utilities, ARPA, including that, that lockbox, whatever, whatever you wanna count, like Corwell calls it, the corporate, a water account. So everything put together is a little over $3 million. And that's how much you have in your account today. Now, 600,000 is about to go out for the, the, the sewer. But, and so then you'll be down, yeah, you'll be down to two, four, yeah.
So, and this is before you probably, because when did Maury Heights North build out with D.R. Horton? Three years ago, two years ago? I mean, so there, there should have been about 900,000 to a million dollars in water sewer availability fees that came to us. Is that, that's in there too?
It's all in there, except that, let me accept one thing, and that is, there, after you were off council, a few years ago, it was before me, it was about a year or two before me, so 2019, about 2019, there was a, I, my understanding is it's 1.5 million dollars that, that was taken from the general fund and used for sewer line improvements.
That was out of the unappropriated funds. That's when Reese spent a lot of money to upgrade the sewer plant and stuff. I think we had a little over a million dollars in there. And it went down, last count, audit count, I think it was like 275 or 300,000 was in there. So I don't know, I can tell you how much is in there now. But, but, but to get back to your lockbox deal, Mr. Manston, he was still here, when they did that loan, what, the 301 and, and the sewer deal, USDA then said, part of the requirement was, water will stand by theirself, sewer will support theirself. So everything had to be broken down. So in the computer, it should be done that way. But if they can get in to Blight and try to figure all that out. But that's how everything is set up. But the general funds and those things were, you know, down. We even had to loan them sewer department, I think, money, 200 and some thousand, 275,000, I think a few years ago, that they had to pay back out of our general funds here. So it's, you know, USDA said, this is what you have to do to, to be with us, and so.
So then what do we need to do to comply with USDA? And, and we can't talk about it anymore. We gotta do it.
Get them on the phone and talk to them, person, face-to-face, person to person, whatever. Emails out to question. And find out exactly what we can do, because I don't think we're gonna get all this done in four months. We talk to them personally, and let's get up a game plan. You know, get up a good game plan to keep us on track, and then follow that game plan. We ain't got no choice.
So I, I've, I've looked at, and maybe, well, let me turn it over to Mr. Voight. He was asking, go ahead.
I don't know, we kind of advanced the discussion since then, but I'll, I'll bring it back real briefly. Yeah, you were asking about the, the bank accounts and everything. Back, uh, two weeks ago, actually, it's probably a little longer than that, I, I was working with Trish, and we collected the last, one, two, three, four years or so of, of everything that was still in the system from the bank, so all the bank statements. And so I, I collated all of them to see how the account's been running, because we weren't able to retrieve Bright data, Keystone data. So I at least wanted to see what our, if our flow was positive. And it is. Yeah, back in, I'll go briefly over, but back in, so July 2020 was the earliest we could get, and we were sitting at 700,000. That was beginning of that budget time, so it actually dropped to 530. But we were in the six digits for our bank at, at that time. And that, that continued, we, we continued on into '21. But, you know, I show a continual positive progression. I, and I, I can't show you this thing right now, so I, I can't show you how I have it edited. I, I have when the COVID came in. If you remember, COVID came in two installments. So I have a thing that, that takes it back out, so you can see the, the equalized version of it. But we do have positive cash flow, but we still, with the systems, don't know, you know, what you're supposed to attach those dollars to. So I'm, I'm still with you on that. But when you had asked, when you said 1.8, you, you were right. Yeah, it was 1.2 for the COVID from the 3, 1.8, bottom line there. But that's, like, like currently, like if we're, some of that COVID money's been spent, some of it's not. So, you know, having a better accounting of it would, would be nice, because if you zap all of our COVID money away right now, that doesn't mean that it's 1.2, because we've already spent it. So we're, we're doing well in the cash flow, but we're doing poorly in the accounting. You know, but that's, that's where we are, where we're understaffed and, and fixing. And I think that they're doing great in, in catching up, so.
You know, did we get that big influx of money from D.R. Horton?
That, that goes back to the accounting. I mean, you know, could, could look for that specifically. D.R. Horton is on the In-N-Out reports when they, they do that, so it's possible to find, yes. But the how, I'm not sure.
But with Blight, they say, once you go in and retrieve reports and stuff, it's nearly impossible to get another one. But I doubt, I don't believe that, because numbers are in the system, you should be able to get them.
Well, the, you know, I, I think the, the greater problem of it is, when you then give yet another task to overtasked individuals, you know, it becomes, because when they, if they have too many things to do, then they have to prioritize themselves. And if we give them five things and they do three, and, and then, you know, one person's gonna get upset, because the one they wanted more didn't get done, and then it snowballs.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, that's exactly what we're working on now, that is improving the data retrieval and the accounting functions for the town.
Good, good deal. Have we, have we come up with an accounting firm yet to come in here and help us with this? Have we come up with an accounting firm yet to come in here and help us?
Uh, no, we're, we're seeking assistance now.
Okay, that all, that needs a really good crank up then, because we're gonna need them.
Except the key, we have two pages that we need, two pages of information that we need to get to our accountant to do the audit.
Okay.
Previous treasurer gave them a small amount of items, but they gave a detailed list. It is, it really is just trying to figure out how to get those items. When what we're trying to do is, we're serving our customers. They're pretty upset at this point, many of them, because they've been waiting a long time for resolution to things. And we're, we're learning software, and we don't have staff. And so the key, in my opinion, is to get that admin assistant in place and trained quickly, so that we can't, so that we can free up the interim treasurer's time, so that then she can work on things. But I mean, I am going to try my best next week to gather those documents that they're talking about, those two pages of documents. So you know, I say that, but the minute I say that, I, I think that Mr. Manster has watched and probably knows from personal experience that I'm, I get pulled in different directions within a minute's time, so. But I'm going to try.
Well, what else can we do? What, what else can we do?
Exactly.
What, what do you need from us?
We're in a bad, I mean, right this moment, we can't even get into our Bright accounting system.
And why is that?
It, evidently, the bill wasn't paid. And so we lost, we lost it. And so we've been trying to get our privileges back.
Is it a yearly subscription, or is it monthly? Why didn't we pay the bill?
I think it's yearly.
When was it due?
It was due in July, but the first, it was due July 1st. It came through in March.
Have we paid it now, though?
Yes, it's paid.
And, and they're like, gonna make us wait to get, get turned back on, or something?
We're waiting, well, it's, they're getting the, I had to send them a check. So they're, they're, and received the check, and soon as it clears and everything, then we have access again. But yeah, it's because it, it wasn't, it wasn't taken care of.
But just, that's just one example. I mean, we, there's, it's a challenging time for us.
There's no doubt. But to be honest with you, it's been a challenging time for, for seven months now. And it's, and it's been virtually the same questions asked, same answers over and over. I, I, I just, I wanna, I wanna jump to the end of what I'm getting ready to say and say that I am committed to being a part of the solution, right? I am. And I, and I hope everybody is. And I, I know that we can dig ourselves out of this. But, but we need to not keep repeating the same thing and expecting a different outcome, right? That's the definition of insanity. Can't keep doing the same thing and expect a different outcome. But we've, we've got four issues. We have a staffing crisis. I mean, by any definition, when we don't have a full-time town manager, when we don't have a town attorney, when we don't have a director of public works, when we don't have a wastewater treatment plant chief operator, when we don't have a treasurer, and we don't have a deputy clerk receptionist, we are in crisis mode. We have a financial crisis. We're, we're talking tonight about potentially defaulting on a USDA loan. I have no confidence that our taxes and our fees are being collected correctly. I.e., people on the 301 corridor haven't got a special tax district bill in two or three years. I'm not assigning blame to anybody in this room, but I will at the end. I don't feel comfortable with our billing. We're getting all the revenue in that we are supposed to get. We have no clear understanding of our current liquid assets or our current debt. Our, we have billing issues, we have software issues, we are in a financial crisis. That's the second crisis we're in. The third one is we're in a water and sewer crisis. We heard about it tonight. No matter how the information dribbled out to us, we are in a crisis. I hope we all go home and we look at William Stanley's report and let it hit us in the face. We've gotta jump on it right now. We can get ahead of it, but we have to jump on it right now. Now I'm gonna assign blame, and I'm, I'm, I'm part of it. The fourth crisis we have, we have a leadership crisis. Leadership starts at the top and goes right down to employees. We are in a leadership crisis. And if you're not a part of the solution, you're part of the problem. I got back on here in Ju, in January. I wanna be a part of the solution. And I'm gonna stay in this thing, but we've gotta admit where we're deficient. We've gotta, we've done seven months of assigning blame to the person right before us. You know, and I, I can point that to everybody. I can point to a, maybe a former councilman, well, he did this. Or we can point to a, a former town manager, well, he did this. Or we can talk about an employee at the wastewater treatment plant, well, he did this. That's fine, and it's good to know where it started, but it's gotta be fixed, and it's gotta be fixed right now. So leadership crisis. So I, I really, I need some guidance. I have a motion. I would like to go into closed session and talk about personnel. I have the motion. And if, if anybody's opposed to it, say so. But I'd like to go into closed session to discuss the performance, the hiring of personnel.
Well, we had a motion. Anybody like?
Mr. Stork, I, first off, well, I, I guess we gotta have a second, so I'll refrain my discussion.
Well, I didn't make, I didn't make the motion. I, I'd have to.
All right, well, good. You did, all right, well, we'll have to do it at the end.
Can I give discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, first, we don't have a, we don't have legal representation, so that, that would be one concern for me. So I would probably recuse myself from the closed session. I, there was a closed session to discuss that exact matter that I wasn't a part of, because I stated I had a conflict. So I, that was on July 24th. I don't know what happened. I mean, council met, went in closed session, discussed it, right?
For town management.
Personnel. I mean, I, to try to go back to your point, I'm not trying to get away from going in a closed session, but I, 2019 was on the website of the last audit, and I, I came on in 2021. And I recall sitting through a presentation from that auditing firm from the 2020. So I think the last year we had was 2020. It's not on the website. I think I got it somewhere, sitting at the house, and 80 pages of paperwork. So we're missing 21 and 22, right? We wouldn't have an audit for '23, so. Yeah, I'm saying we're missing two of them. We got 2020s, which was given in '21. So we're missing 21 and 22, we would just be getting around to, because we just ended the fiscal year to, to do the audit, correct, which would take a while, so.
If we get one audit done, I think they'll be more than satisfied, you know, the oldest one, that's, that's two years old.
I mean, I, I, I understand the, the problem there. I just, I don't, without legal representation, I don't.
Well, I don't, well, I don't think, I don't think, okay, then I don't think we specifically need to go in closed session for what I'm gonna propose. And if, and if I step out of line, please, somebody stop me. I think if we wait around to Zoom interview people in Rochester, New York, to interview 80 down to 15, thinking that adding a clerk's gonna free up enough time to get anything fixed, I think we're fooling ourselves. You know, there's, there's, there's a group called the Berkeley Group. Have you ever heard of the Berkeley Group?
Yeah.
The Berkeley Group. They are, they have, they have retired, a lot of retired town managers, city managers, town attorneys, city attorneys. I think we need to call them and say, we need a fixer. We need you, can you, how much would you charge to supply us with a interim town manager? And an interim town attorney, until we can hire these people. Because the definition of insanity is doing the same thing for another four months that we've been doing for seven, and think we're going to do a different outcome. You're gonna get pulled away. You're not gonna be able to do it. I think we've gotta, we've gotta, we gotta hire a, a gun. We gotta hire somebody in here. I looked at their website today, and they have all these people. Doug Fawcett is one of their consultants. He, he's a guy that has some ties to Caroline, but he, he was. And then he went to Fredericksburg. You know, I'm, I'm not saying Doug Fawcett's the guy. But I need, think we need to find a retired gun.
Doesn't, doesn't Chris Boyle, Boyd run that one? Is that the one he runs? Huh? Because if it is, I talked to him five, six months ago, yeah. And he didn't have anybody. They were, yeah, they didn't have nobody they could put out here.
So I, I called VML, because VML, now, don't wanna scare anybody, but we haven't paid our VML dues either. But she still talked to me. Now, they're due in July, and she said, maybe they're in the mail, so let's hope they are. But, you know, we, we're a VML member, so we should be using them. They, they're a great resource. I told her our situ, I talked to the executive director of VML, Michelle Gowdy. And she says, here's what you need to do. And she said, need to call the Berkeley Group. She said, here are two names of attorneys that will come in, and, and they're what you need. She gave me two names. We've gotta get some hired guns in here to get the forensics done on this audit. And we don't have, we don't have, I don't know if we have enough, if we hired a big gun to come in, I don't know if we can do it. We may need to talk to USDA. But the days of us supposing, I'm not smart enough to know whether a face-to-face conversation with USDA will fly. So I'm not even gonna talk about it. I, I would, I'd do, I'd like to make a motion that we engage the Berkeley Group, and we get a town, we gotta get a town attorney right now. And then we need to, we need to get somebody in here for our meeting, so we can do the stuff we need to do. And all the while, we need to be looking for one long-term. You know, the county uses a firm, but you get what you pay for, right? If we, if we get somebody on the cheap, it's cheap, but it's, it's on the cheap. So I think we need to get, we need to stand up a fighting force right now. And that fighting force is a interim town manager and a interim town attorney, and task them with fixing this, telling us where our money is and fixing it. And I make that motion, if, if that's acceptable.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, may I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
The, I, I know the owner of the Berkeley Group, and he and I held two position, two of the same positions in the state, and.
Drew or Darren?
Darren. And it, it's a great group. They charge about $100 an hour for their services. But I do, just what I wanted to add was that I am at this, I'm bowing out in a couple of weeks. So it's time to, it really is time to figure out what to do.
It's not been fair to you, Allison. You, you've been thrown into an impossible situation.
Due to, due to health reasons and personal well-being, I just can't continue without additional help. So I think it's just time to move on and wish everybody well. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
We didn't have a second, but I, I guess if, if there is a, you said you would like to make one, I guess if.
Do we, do we have a second on a motion?
What's that?
Second. I, I have a second by Dan. Now time for discussion.
So a couple of years ago, we did lurk, look at the Berkeley Group, and that was not feasible. We didn't get qualified candidates to what we saw. And we just, it was not cost-effective for us. So I, I understand the concern, and I've been on here since 2021. And I, I, I think there's, it, it's nothing that's probably the majority of the people that are sitting up here and in this room this evening that have contributed to this. I think it's years of the, the topics you bring up, and they are of a concern. And now it is at a breaking. And now it is at a breaking point because we have a USDA requirement. We have audits. We've had loss of personnel and I, I, I don't know, one, if we could afford it, two, if it is the solution. And three, the staffing, I'm just going to say from the pandemic itself has been tough for, not here, just everywhere across the board. So it's not a quick method. I mean, I, I hope others are feeling better with staffing, but it's, it's, it's a tragedy. I, I look at it like that. I mean, it's just hard to find qualified individuals for the positions that you need. I, I don't, frankly, I don't know what we're, what we're going to do.
Well, I think, I think we've got, if we can enter into the agreement with the county, I think we've got the legality of running that plant under control. Now, we don't have the, the, we don't know how we're going to fix all the problems down there, but we've got that staffing issue solved. If not the Berkeley Group, you know, you know, they're, they're, they're retired town managers. For instance, Travis Cusenberry, the retired from King George. He may be interested. There's, we, we can find, and, and if it's a hundred dollars an hour, that's a lot. But default on million dollar loan? I don't want to go to jail. And I, I don't know that I can go to jail, but I don't want to do that. So a hundred dollars an hour is going to be cheap. And the attorney, it's going, it's going to be expensive. But we, we've got to slowly dig our way out of this. And how do you do that? How do you eat that elephant? One little bite at a time. So if we had a personnel committee, I'd ta- I'd task them with looking at this. I will be glad to serve with someone else because I don't want to ruffle any fabric of being a renegade. I'll be glad to serve with one or two others in identifying this part-time town manager and part-time town attorney.
So be it.
Standing them up right away.
I'll, I'll go with that because, and you're not ruffling my feathers, David. And let me just say this. I've just been spinning my wheels for three months here with applications. People have called, we've called. It's embarrassing for this town to contact individuals and then leave them by the wayside because now whatever decision has been made, I don't know. So I hope some other method can be work. If you think paying the Berkeley Group, because it probably will cost you $10,000 to $15,000. I know the last town attorney we got through Berkeley Group unfortunately did not last that long. But if you can find someone, that's great. I just, someone will need to call back the people that I've called twice already because they're expecting a callback after a meeting that we thought was being set up is not for whatever dubious reasons have occurred. So if you want to do this, because I remember Arthur, myself and Jean were told to do this. We did our due diligence. Again, when, when June, July 24th, Mr. Webb asked to do this, we went forward again to do this and nothing came to fruition. So if you want to do it with whomever else, because you, that's fine by me because I'm pretty much, I'm done. I'm, I'm done with.
I'm, I'm not talking about.
I don't, trust me, I'm not insulted or anything.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not talking about the, the full-time piece of this. I'm just saying I'll be glad to help, let's get two interims in here and then give us a little time to find the right people.
Go to ICMA as well. You can contact them.
And you know, and another, another portion that's kind of frustrating, if you go to the V, the advertisement for this position is not listed on the VML website. So I mean, the one place that anybody in the, in the world's going to go to look for a job in Virginia is the VML website.
Well, they'll go to ICMA as well. It's not listed there.
Few months it was on there.
It's, it's not.
I need to put it back on.
Okay.
Pay $600 to advertise it on ICMA. There's, that's the premier professional site for, you know, anyone who wants a job in municipalities.
I'll put the, the ad tomorrow on the, back on the VML.
So if we're willing to spend 10 to 15, spend the miserable 600.
Could, could I get one, could I get one other person to be with me on this little temporary interim search? Jean, okay. Counsel, would you like two or would you like three? I don't guess we can do three, can't we? Yeah.
Two, yeah, okay. So David and Jean, all right, we still have the motion on the floor. Are we done with discussion?
I didn't get my spiel.
Oh, Lord, Jeff, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to leave you out, son.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's how it goes. I just, I, I had enough of a different take that I wanted to go ahead and, and speak up. But I think that might be a pretty viable way to go for the town attorney. You can get maybe a quick turnaround there. Excuse me, stream. All right, it's good. But I, I just wanted to say something about the issues of, well, like talking about like a leadership crisis and everything. I, it's not working how it is. That, that, that's true at, at the council level, you know, a- a- all the way down. And like although it's not about blame or anything, you, you have to, you know, ask why it, it doesn't work. And, and right now, I, I think what, what's, what's happened is somebody, I think, I think Valerie you said spinning wheels and that, that's perfectly the, the situation. It's been spinning wheels, whether you want to say the, the three more, three or four months since talking about actually interviewing or the seven months since you all joined or, or however long I've been on here, you know, a- all of that in different ways. There's been a lot of spinning wheels. The, you know, you point to each part that where we've had like the, the staff turnover and the reorganization after reorganization. Right now though, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm upset, not at anybody, but o- over the, over what it actually is. Not like, not, not what we're doing to anybody or how things are flowing, but we're understaffed. And it's like, like David, you said something about like, you know, we can only, you know, throw so much money at, at something and that, that, that's true. That's not going to in of itself fix anything. You know, I, I have reservations about Berkeley Group. I've, I've seen that in, in my years of watching them, I've seen it not work out more times than work out, but that doesn't mean that it wouldn't. If you want to go that way, by all means, look at them. I mean, that proposal is a proposal, so it might be good. But with where we are now, we have been so nonchalant in the approach to getting the interviews, for whatever reasons, it doesn't matter, that we have left our current staff in their understaffed state with their own level of uncertainty that whole time. It's a bit late now, so I'm not saying that we can recant on that. But you know, if, if we had had more internal communication, may, maybe tried to do some, some things and, and talked with what remains of staff, we could have set up a, a issue. Like when we accepted the town manager's resignation, you know, like, you know, I, I sat here and I did it and I was like, you know, it was, it was something to the effect of, you know, as of date or until we get somebody. And we still haven't gotten anybody, but we also haven't given any like direction of when we would, you know? And, and whether it's failing in, in, in answering emails or in, in a meeting, like we, we, we haven't done it. And so we, we haven't left a real good direction towards the staff that we do have to set up that future. We, we could have had a, a decent chance of doing that. We could have picked any time and given ourselves a deadline that we have to have this done by X. And, and I, I don't think we did a, a great job of that. Like we could have, for example, we could have said, hey, we, we have these, what was it, five names that we came up with or so last time? Was that we're, we're going to talk with them. You know, let, let's do a tentative thing of, hey, we want them to start in November. Meanwhile, we have all these other crises that we've talked about. And so we, we have this time where here's current staff. Hey, we want to hire somebody at this time. Can you stay till then or can you transition? Or can we have somebody come in at this time? And you work along them to get the thing that the reins handed over. I would have preferred to see that. It's sadly kind of being a dead horse at this point. So like where I am in agreement with looking into what you're saying, I, I just, I, I'm, I don't know, pick a, pick an adjective disgruntled or something over, over, you know, how we approached it.
Well, I think I heard a comedian say one time, you know, speech making's over, we need fighters now, you know? Speech making's over, we need fighters now. Not talking, you just made a speech, but all, all we can tend to, we tend to do is just talk it to death, talk it. At some point, speech making's over, we need fighters. And so at the end of the day, and I'm looking right in the mirror when I say this, it all comes back to this table ultimately. And if, if we've, you know, I heard some stuff tonight. I don't know what the statute of limitations are on criminal behavior and thievery, but I heard some stuff tonight that I can't believe, I cannot believe happened. Now, we can all say, well, that was the last. I got you. It was, it was the last bad guy. Can you believe what they let happen? But we're, that, that ship sailed. We are here and we are responsible. We are responsible. And I'm telling you, in the Navy, you know, captain might be in sleep, in bed asleep. The ship bump into another ship, he's going to get court martialed and kicked out. The chief of police in Atlanta, one of his cops killed a person last weekend. He either resigned or he fired. I'm just saying, the buck stops with us, the talking's over. We need fighters. And we can suppose and want, but we, we, talking's over, man. I'm telling you, we'll, we'll be, we've been talking for seven months and not done a thing. So I, I submit to you, talking's over, it's time for fighters. And so that's my motion, it's been seconded, let's vote on it.
Well, I, I got, I got one more thing. I want to answer that directly. I want to answer, but I, I need to bounce something off you. What do we do tomorrow? Like that, that's, that's what I think we keep missing.
Okay. Tomorrow, I'm going to clear my calendar and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to make calls. Tomorrow, tomorrow, we need to stand up a interim town manager and an interim town attorney tomorrow or the next day. That's what we need to do. We've got to get somebody in here that knows this business, that's done this business, that can work through Mr. Manster, work through our staff that's left, glean all the information, because I'm telling you, there's guys in my industry that are funeral consultants that will come in that have been doing this for years and look at what you got going on and tell you what's wrong. That's what we need. And that's what I'm going to start. Jean, we're going to look, we're going to look for tomorrow and we're going to bring it back. And we, we need to do it yesterday.
Yeah, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to specify like tomorrow isn't like, like physically tomorrow. There, there is time that happens, speed of government. We can call everybody tomorrow, they're not starting tomorrow. That, that's all I'm saying.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm, you know, so when's the next meeting?
Seventh of September.
I had thought that what we would do is, and coming into this meeting, I thought that we were going to recess this meeting into next week for the sake of trying to get those interviews.
Well, can we recess this meeting to next week to let me and Jean bring back what we found in a week's time?
If that's what you like. I, I would.
She's, she's gone on vacation.
If you've got your phone, if you, add another person to my group.
So did we, are we not, we, there was a, a, last, two weeks ago on the 24th, you all agreed to do this on Thursdays. Is that not what's going to happen? Because what I see is there's so much of this constant over and over and over. We keep changing it. So we agreed on Thursdays, now it's not on Thursdays. Now you're starting tomorrow. There's never a set plan. We are always spinning, spinning, spinning.
I'm good on Thursday and Valerie, I'm sorry that I, I felt like I responded to every one of your emails. I said, I'm good. And then it kept changing and going. And I mean, I said I was good, 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 good.
Doesn't matter anymore.
Set it up.
It's, we, as David said, we do not need to move forward, but it's, we can never come to a concise agreement now. We're going to do it now and then in two weeks it changes. That seems to be the problem here.
Well, may I submit, may I submit?
Pick a day and just do it.
I submit to you that I would really like us to think about reinstituting committees. Because I, since I've gotten on council, I have this feeling, impression that maybe we don't all trust each other. So we don't trust each other to go out and do a body of work and bring it back to us and report and we act on it. I, I think we're not being efficient unless we appoint a, a committee. So like we had standing committees, water, sewer and trash, personnel, budget and finance, streets and sidewalks. Do away with this work session before every meeting, reinstitute our committees and the personnel committee should be the one that's tasked with bringing this information back and let's do it next. I'm with you, next Thursday, let's do it next Thursday. Why in the world wouldn't we want to try something? If, if it hadn't been working the way we've been doing it with just one big open body talking about everything? I, I, I would love to, and I'll make another motion after we vote on this one, but I want to see committees come back and grind out the, the, the work and bring it back to us and it cuts down on the length of time. So that's the end of my discussion. Anybody else want to talk? Let's vote on this thing.
I got one to Mrs. Coles' point. So we've got, I guess applicants that we've made contact with and already set a date. So how does that play into it? I'd like clarification on that.
There's no reason we shouldn't still talk to them if, if it's out there.
We, well, you have to advertise for a special meeting and you would have had to do that or you have to do it by tomorrow. These people I've called, then I called and canceled because frankly, I didn't hear any response. So we would have to call them again, but I'm not going to call five people here if you're not satisfied with these individuals and you want to get someone from Berkeley or whatever. All I'm saying is it, it's an embarrassment for the town to do that to an applicant. But that's just my opinion and I'm old school.
We had, I guess, and I was not at the meeting, so I can't speak to it. That's six out of the eight of us, but there was, I guess, a decision made. I, I can't really speak to it, but we're, I guess we're omitting that and going a different route, right? From what I'm hearing is that we're going to touch base with the group to try to get them, to bring them in. So I'm just trying to seek clarification of the other five omitted. We're, we're going to hire from a, a firm and bring them in as an interim position? Do we, how, how do we, I think to Jeff's point, how do we move forward on this?
So I'll be glad, I'll, if you give me the, these five, if you give me them, I'll be glad to email them and say, hey, we've hit a little roadblock. We're still interested in you. Stand, stand down, we'll be back in touch with you. If we go through the interview process and get somebody to move here from Rochester, New York, the four months will be over with. He'll never, he or she will never be up to speed to figure out anything and will be in default of our USDA loan. We need, we need a hired gun in here yesterday to fix this problem. So I'll call all these guys and I'm with you. It, it's embarrassing to get people all frothed up and you don't call them back. I'll email every one of them and tell them, hope you're still interested. Please stand down, we'll be back in touch when we're ready. And then let's get this interim, let's get our problem fixed. And then if we want to all the while start looking for people, we need to do it. Because the ultimate goal is to have a full-time staff member, not an interim forever. But we've got to get a interim in here to fix this, this blood loss. And these four things, man, are hemorrhages, hemorrhaging. So Mr. Mayor, anybody else, can we call for the vote?
All right, we're calling for a vote.
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
De- Jean?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries, we will start looking for a interim town manager and.
Lawyer.
All right, Mr. Mayor. As that vote was just to allow, well, to to, you know, actually pursue the interest of that, that doesn't, didn't preclude anything else. So I would like to state that I would have preferred to still interview said applicants that we already talked to. I just wanted to be on the. No, he was going to call them, tell them not to.
But.
I mean, my understanding of what you just said, Mrs. Torque, was that you're going to tell them to, no, wait, we'll get back to you if we need you at a later time. That's what I understood.
Well, I I'm for saving Ms. Coles' reputation with these people and just call them and say, hey, we are still interested, we've hit a little roadblock. If you're, if you're agreeable to wait, we'll be back in touch.
Oh, they know that, they know we've hit a roadblock because I called them back to tell them we can't do this. So and that that doesn't affect my reputation.
No, no, I did.
I'm not new to this rodeo, trust me.
Well, so then, so we don't need to call them?
So I would contact them and say.
Yep.
Whether you intend to interview them and set up the interview.
Well, can can we have?
How long these people are going to be available?
Can we have, can we have two trains run at the same time? Can we have?
That's what I was thinking, we could do both.
Davis, you know, finding an interim and then we can be cruising along interviewing people too, because ultimately we want to get a full time guy. We we don't want to pay a hundred dollars an hour, any, a second longer than we have to.
But the thing is, is not all of us can get together or not all of us want to get together at the same time to do this. I mean, we picked Thursday nights, the next three Thursday nights, and now they're all kibosh, so what 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 the hell would you?
So Randy, let me, let me give you an example. We trusted our town manager and our volunteer to weed from 80 down to 15. Why in the world can't we trust a personnel committee to to begin work on interviewing people? And not bring us all together? Let them weed, weed down, get us three candidates and then as a body, we interview three instead of five. Can we vote?
I agree.
Oh, no, so we we were voting, right? We already voted on it.
We already voted. I agree with what you're saying, but it's just that we had set Thursday nights aside to get a lot of this taken care of, but it never happens.
I'd like to still see it happen.
Day aside, we need to do it.
Yeah, I I would like to see it happen.
But nobody, um, emailed Valerie back. I did, I did.
I can tell you, I I didn't because here we are again, conducting official town business through.
Emails.
Not emails and it's not allowed. So I, yes, I refrain from providing that back and I try to, I try to make a phone call or a face to face visit solely to one individual and I'm not going to conduct myself in that.
Reply all if that helped.
I'm with you, it's just, we, we get it, we get reminded and then it's, you can't do that and then we're back to doing it and I get it, it's just.
We we all have kind of a different interpretation of that aspect. I I don't prefer the email part. I'll I'll point out to, you know, where where it was, like I I was tasked in that to, you know, say something to staff, which which I did do, but that doesn't. Me saying something to staff, I I can, I can go to staff and I can say, hey, all all six of you all agreed that we should do given thing. That doesn't count. At the end of the day, a special call meeting still would have required three of us to email them. And and by the time that I, and we'll call me tardy on this part, but by the time I was like, you know, I told them and it doesn't mean anything. It was already like yesterday, the day before. So my mind, like, why not just hash that out publicly here? Which is what I've been trying to do, I, you know, could have handled that better, I I assume, but we are here now, we haven't lost next week yet. And right now, we have the ability to publicly, every one of us is here. So there there's no issue with an email chain or somebody forgetting. We we have the way to make anything happen.
Let's, whatever else business we need to conduct in this adjourn, let's adjourn it till next Thursday.
Right, we'll continue it on, yep.
Continue it on.
Hey, I think we took care of your last topic, didn't we? Arthur, about the attorney. So we we discussed that at the same time?
I'm in agreement with that. I will, and again, I'll state this one, so I was not privy to the Thursdays because I wasn't in the 24th meeting. So I may, I may have a conflict next Thursday. Which I can state if need be, but. It's my anniversary, so I don't know, that's going to go over.
Yeah.
You're right.
So, um, do I, if there's nothing else to be discussed, do I have a motion?
I I'd just like to request when the search for attorney is done, that we, can we require it is a municipal attorney?
Yeah, I think we have to, I mean.
Okay, that's cool.
That that'd be good, that'd be good.
Mr. Mayor, you need a motion to recess until next Thursday?
Yes, I do. That's what I'm waiting on because the next one after that is going to be.
I'll make a motion to recess until next Thursday.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Arthur first it and Jeff seconded it. Do I, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now I need a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
No, 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 the recess is all you needed.
Oh, that's right, never mind, thank you, Randy or Jeff for.